Hey everybody, I am starting our meeting on March 29th at 6:30 tonight. We are going to go immediately into executive session to conduct a grievance hearing as required in the agreement between the school committee and the Masculina Teachers Association, which is executive session purpose number two, and we will return to open session hopefully by 7:15. So stay tuned. So I've read that. And now I need to... That was the motion. So now does somebody have to second it? Joe's gonna second it and we'll go along in a roll call. We do have to roll?
Yes.
Right, right, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
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 Okay, thank you. We will be back shortly.
It was short.
Okay, so we're done? Thank you. We'll see you shortly.
How are you, Trevor?
I'm good. How are you?
I thought last night went well, Tasha.
I did too. I was happy. I was proud of us.
So I feel like that was... I was driving in.
I know.
Here we go.
We're gonna get to that. Where am I supposed to be?
There, and if you go out this door to rooms to the left.
Am I late?
Yes.
What time was I supposed to be here?
6:30.
Oh geez!
During the executive session.
Ah!
Out the door, two classrooms to the left. This door, yeah, that door straight ahead.
It says fire door?
Yeah, that one.
Okay, thank you.
Two classrooms down to the left on the right side.
Why would I say hi?
I see all the cokes. We were the ones.
I usually... Yes.
During the executive session.
Oh, the executive section's at 6:30.
I have no idea what's on the agenda.
Okay, the legislatures are coming. Senators. Yes, they are. Senators want it 6:30 and then Senate it regular. I'm glad you came, but you like this. They do want to have...
Trevor didn't say that.
Well, like I said, Trevor said, "Are you coming tonight?" This was our order today. I'm like, "Oh my God, I totally spaced out." Like ask people, like, "I think I can pull it off." I am, as you can see. Legislation.
Are they coming? Go ahead, two executive.
Do you know where they went? I don't.
He might, oh, he knows.
We just got here.
Oh, excuse us. Oopsie poopsie.
There, out that door, two classrooms to the left.
Classrooms to the left. $4.88 for the year.
A quarter.
Wow. Yes, so $4.88 for the year. So...
And that doesn't go down. That never goes away.
Oh, see, that's the top of the list. Yes, that'll be it. The askers will be a little less for a quarter. Oxford is a big fat chunk of change. I have, I have, I have just some paper. So... So... Subsidizing somehow, but it's gonna kick in next year to other things, other useful things.
They're gonna use their revenue, huh?
They, I think so. They, I think so.
They spend four hundred thousand on rescue truck. And then they come in to pay five fifty for any help. It's not be part of budget. But it only isn't a hundred and forty thousand. I thought it's the right thing. I spent all time today talking to Karen Keery. Karen Keery. She called me today and I told her, you know, it's a good meeting. They said, "They don't have a clue what you guys did one." I said, "It didn't, it didn't go well for you." I said, "They're not interested in finding anything until they see from you." Okay. Well, you know, she said she's, she's kind of all periphery. She said, "You know, they were busy with their lives." And someone looked forward and they're really tuning in. She said, "She should pass me information upon." Sarah Guido's pretty good. Pretty good point there. Centered down.
Thank you.
It's gonna be fun. I'm excited for it.
Darker in here?
Yes, yeah, I'm interning with media manager for a moving company. They're like a moving company, it's my friend's dad who does it, it'll be fun. Graphic design and all that stuff, it'll be fun. I think so, how are you? I think so, just seeing what's available. How are you?
Too much air.
A little, a little. It's a little change.
Thank you.
Check in.
Oh, I don't have any, I have a few friends who do.
Hit send on this email.
We got the same color going.
Okay, but it's winter, we all found out when we walked out the doors.
I just bought a new jacket for all the lacrosse games because they're not a lacrosse. And they, like, the parents bought, like, longer jackets and, and I was like, oh, I don't need that. Like, if I bought it and I'm hoping to jinx the weather now I've spent money.
No, she's actually, alright, I'm gonna take a step. Hi there, how are you? A lot of kids stayed for our school activities, but I'm lucky to drive her everywhere, so. It's nice though, the campus is really pretty. Yeah, it's a small group. I don't think, I'm in Gloucester, Mariner, you know, I've never been on it. I like, I agree, they keep it really small. It's right now, but I don't know if I'll see my things.
Get going in just one minute.
I don't know, I think.
Just a little bit, be drawn. Thank you. Oh, no, it was nice, I didn't want to eat, I like, not too.
It's a big decision that I'm like scared to like, yeah, I'm your peak boy.
Well, he'll be alright next to you, you don't bite. Walk me through my looking. Oh, never. I haven't seen it. Yeah. Nope, nope. Jonathan, whenever you're ready. We're good? Okay, well, welcome back to us. We are now back from our expected session, thank you for waiting, two extra minutes. To start, there's another school shooting. I'm appalled but not surprised and, and that really hurts my heart and until people in this world start, like, caring about our children, then, um, yeah, nothing is gonna change. But like guns more than kids, this will continue. So there's my emotional plea for the world to start changing a little bit and be a little kinder. That's all you hear from me, well, not for the rest of the night, but that's all you're hearing from me for my comments. Any comments from the audience? Come up and let us know who you are.
Hi, Kathleen Missgarfato from Topsfield. Just since we're still in the midst of budget issues, I'm hoping you all tonight can clarify, I've been hearing a lot of questions about the override. I don't know if you're able to, but if you could give us an estimate of what that's gonna look like for town. I've been hearing that the Topsfield has been able to provide an estimate based on, I guess, the appraisals of property, the average appraisals of the property taxes, how much it'll cost to the average homeowner.
So I can just tell you that the elementary school. Overrides are town-specific and that's up to the town as to how, even if there is an override or not, so that would all be information from the towns.
Okay, and I was putting that out there to the Topsfield reps to see, to talk with the FinCom and get any insight into that. Thank you.
Any other? Thank you, any other? No, okay.
Stella, RSE report. Yes, back, thank you. So I'm Stella, I'm the Class 2023 Advisor or Student Advisory Board Representative. And so in preparation for tonight, I've just sought out some feedback from our student body and student council reps. And with the third quarter closing, a lot of students are getting excited, especially the seniors, internship starts to kind of creep up. A lot of people are excited about the kind of change in schedule. And many of our juniors are gearing up with their prom sales, with their tickets, so a lot of people are excited for not only the quarter to end, but these big events that are coming up. Class elections are also in full swing now, they go on stage next week, so campaigning has begun, campaign posters are lining the hallways. A lot of people are really excited to hear their classmates talk, so that's been huge, I've been hearing a lot about that. And then our environmental club has also brought to my attention the current sustainability policy that will be discussed tonight, I believe. And the students are just looking forward, especially in the club but outside as well, to seeing a more eco-friendly, you know, changes in our lunchrooms that will reduce the carbon footprint that we take part in. They're really excited for, you know, to get, we have amazing recycling and compost bins in our cafeterias, but just kind of reminding students that they're there is a huge one. And they're just kind of motivated more now than ever, just because I, or they have felt that that message has kind of been lost this year. So they're really excited to see that it changes and hope that these changes take place next year for sure. But many of the students shared really positive feedback. The outlook on the end of this year seems to be good with many of the students. And they're thankful that you guys are here to listen to their thoughts coming from me. So thanks for letting me speak.
Stella, I have to say, I feel like you and your class is one of the first that's really kind of come up with us. And it's been a real pleasure to see you mature and come to our meetings and you started coming to our meetings in masks.
Yes.
And now we get to see your beautiful smile and it's, it's really nice having you part of our, our team.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
No, what are we speaking of?
Yeah, so it's a part of my media and communications class and we did a video project for PBS. And we all had to make a video and you could group up with people and it was how you bring, or how community like affects you. And so I made a video on how my family before COVID, family dinners weren't like a normal thing. And so COVID kind of created family dinners for my family and then it expanded to family and friends, obviously, after COVID once. You weren't in lockdown and it was safe to do so. But yeah, my video, I was partnered with Julia Graves and so we showed how both of our families took on that community role. And it was really fun, we ended up getting picked, which we did not think we were going to, but it was fun to see our video be featured on the page.
That's amazing, well, we're gonna get it shared with all of us now, so, so thank you. Open up, anybody have any questions, comments for Stella? Is this your last meeting with us?
I'm not sure, our schedule with the other SEVs kind of changed a little bit, so I don't know if this is my last one or not.
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck as you go out on internships and.
Appreciate it, yeah, I'm excited.
As you know, you can stay here for as long or as short as you want to.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thanks Stella. Okay, so now we are honored to have some of our legislators come. I know that they've been hearing from us and now we get to talk to them in person, so. I don't know how we want to do this, before you've like stood up, but you can just sit there also and just kind of introduce yourself, what, what your districts are also, since they're all kind of confusing.
Those are close enough to a mic.
Oh, yeah, so, that's a mic right there. So you can just like pull your chairs over to the table too, if you want. When yours gets here, he'll be looking for a podium. So speak now. Say it with affection.
I know.
Oh, there's Rep Kazner, so.
Hi.
So, wonderful job Stella, let's start with that.
Come on up, Rep Kazner, I'm Representative Sally Kearns, sorry, we get into State House Think Mode. I represent all of Danvers, Ward 6 of Peabody, half of Middleton, Middleton Precinct 2, Topsfield Precinct 2, Wenham Precinct 1A. That's, that's the choppy bad part of it and the heated part of it is just that we all treat, it's just as though I have five communities. And, and I treat, I treat it that way, in my work that way, so some of you I know better than others. Always a pleasure to be here at Masco and again, budding filmmaker Stella Nagel.
Yes.
Well, that was wonderful, I look forward to, I don't know how I'll be, how will I, how could, can you send me a link?
I can, I can forward it.
Okay, great, and so with me, we have like most of our, we have Rep Adrian Ramos who has.
Yeah, so I am the new representative for the 14th Essex, which includes precincts 2 and 3 in Boxford, which is part of Masco. Otherwise, it includes North Andover, West Newbury, Groveland and Amesbury, so a few regional schools in the, in the mix there.
And then, go ahead Kristin.
Hi, Kristin Kazner, I represent this new second Essex, second Essex now is Hamilton, Ipswich, Rowley, Newbury, Georgetown and the other half of Topsfield. So I, I too have three regional school systems in my district and it's so great to be here, I'm sorry I was late, this is a large place, I went in other doors. But happy to be here, I know I've met some of you and thank you so much for the support and look forward to meeting more of you and really trying to figure out how I can, we, the school system, the regional school system with the issues that we are all very aware of and also others that we want to know more about, so.
Hi, I'm Karen Trowbridge and I'm here representing Representative Traum Nguyen, who is moderating a panel tonight and couldn't be here. She's the rep for the 18th Essex District, so a little piece of Boxford and a piece of North Andover, Andover and Tewksbury. So I'm not gonna stand with these state reps, but I just did want to express her that she was sorry she couldn't be here and I will be taking very good notes for her. Thank you.
So I would sort of, I'm looking around, Sasha, I guess you're, we're here always to listen, we've been hearing, you get stellar grades, all of you for outreach to your legislators about the overall budget picture, the 14 and a half percent. We don't even have to say what it is anymore, just the 14 and a half percent, when we all know what we're talking about, which is the increase, the very sudden and sharp increase that was unexpected in a very necessary budget item, no one's, no one's disputing that, but it would have been nice to kind of do it more gradually, so I'm preaching to the choir. Mike, if you wanna, I don't know, set it up a little bit more.
You hit it right on, I mean, it's obviously, I mean, those, those programs are incredibly important and they, like everybody else, are having trouble hiring, you know, qualified people, so. You know, I, I can understand why, but it's hard to swallow, that's, that's the problem.
Well, it's because we also, you know, have all those problems and we're not allowed for our budget to go up 14%, can you imagine? Players, you know, I mean, there's, there's schools and we're schools and, you know, we would like to go up 14% too, but nobody's giving us that money, so.
Well, we're, we're hearing it and I, I don't know a legislator, I feel like someone.
I'm here, go, go, I'm cheering you on, go.
So we literally are just, Mike has just kind of laid it out, that we're, we're all hearing about the 14% increase, we know that this is a priority. This has been adopted as a priority by the Progressive Caucus, let that sink in. That's how kind of mainstream everybody is concerned about this and, and I think, you know, I think the same thing down the hall, on the other side, in the other chamber.
But not the dark side, just the other side.
Right, so we are, you know, shaping our budget now, we're, the Ways and Means Committee is now listening to feedback on the governor's budget, which is a really beautiful document, doesn't mean we're not gonna do some things with it that might be not quite to the liking of everyone, but that's the world of budgeting and we're gonna be, actually the Ways and Means Committee will be in Gloucester this Friday. And while education is not on the agenda tomorrow, it was a week and a half ago, Desi is aware of it. It was quite an education, by the way, the Ways and Means hearing it to listen to very rural communities, not like we have where you're maybe 10 miles from a more, like in the case of Boxford, okay, you're pretty far out there, but places out, you know, what's the, what's the Mohawk Trail.
Oh, yeah, it's way out there.
Regional school and boy, they, they really struggle and we're to the point where you don't even know how they're keeping things going. So we, we hear you, we, I believe the. not quite to the liking of everyone, but that's the world of budgeting. And we're gonna be, actually, the Ways and Means Committee will be in Gloucester this Friday. Um, and uh while education is not on the agenda tomorrow, it was a week and a half ago. Desi is aware of it. Um, it was quite an education, by the way, the Ways and Means hearing it to listen to very rural communities, not like we have where you're maybe ten miles from a more, like in the case of Boxford, okay, you're pretty far out there. But uh places out, you know, what's the, what's the uh Mohawk Trail?
Oh, yeah, it's way out there.
Regional school. And boy, they, they really struggle. Um, and we're to the point where you don't even know how they're keeping things going. Um, so we, we hear you. We, I believe the circuit breaker is going to get very strong support. Uh, because we know that communities are struggling to absorb this all at once. It's just, it's just too much at one time. It's that simple. It doesn't even, you know, have to be expanded much more than that. It's too much at once. Um, Costa, you have thoughts?
And I'll tell you my thoughts. You know, I first, I wanna, I appreciate all of you being here and all of the time and effort that you have put in into your jobs. Bruce, you've been, you know, in the legislature forever. Uh, so, you know, I appreciate that. But, you know, for a very long time, Masco has received the minimum chapter seventy-eight increase, which has remained stagnant at thirty dollars per student. During this period of time, the state has increased the minimum wage. The governor's salary has greatly increased. All of your salaries have greatly increased. And ask yourselves and your fellow legislators and the governor, is it fair that while all of you have gotten significant increases, that our students have not gotten a raise? The state finances a sound, the state announces record levels of increases in new money for education. The voters approved the SRTAX to help fund education. Ask yourselves, is it fair that in this environment, students have not received a raise in probably over twenty years? The minimum chapter seventy increase should be permanently increased to a hundred dollars per student and indexed to the higher of inflation or the percentage increase of new funding for education. In evaluating fairness, keep in mind that while the state tax revenue has grown by ninety-three percent since two thousand and eight, and you can look at the graph done by the MMA, the unrestricted general government aid has still not fully recovered. We, we are assessed to fund the MBTA with no real return in terms of service and face increased costs from the recent police training legislation and other state mandates. Our kids deserve a raise. Please consider that when you're doing your budget work. Thank you.
So one of the reasons that I um arranged a call with Desi, Costa, was to, so that you could really kind of dig into some of the granular data. Uh, and I think your initial question to me was if we fully fund the Student Opportunity Act, which I think was a marvelous achievement, uh to bring educational opportunity and equity of opportunity to the entire state. Um, you know, we, this is one of the top school districts in the state. And it's sometimes maybe a little difficult to relate to districts that, that struggle. I think the SOA was a, was a fantastic achievement. You were there for it. I was not. I was there in ninety-three for the original ed reform and that was um groundbreaking for its time. Now the formula has been updated, I think appropriately. I, the, you know, to say that, your language about give our students a raise is a little bit, I, I'm not quite.
It, it's completely accurate. How long has the minimum aid been thirty dollars per student?
Well, but that would tell you, if you look at it strictly that way, I mean, every community gets, you never get less than you got.
Or more.
Prior year, I mean.
Because the last year, we actually worked to increase sixty dollars.
Yes, that was a bonus, not a raise.
However, we stick with your line of reasoning and we want to put another chart up there. We'd say that last year, minimum aid increased by one hundred percent, one hundred percent. And I think the other thing that we need to think about more clearly, and, and I would ask Dr. Harvey for this, but I'd be curious if we looked over a ten-year period of time, what has happened to enrollment in, at the Masconomet Regional School District, right? Down. So what should happen under the formula? Masconomet Regional School District should get a cut.
It depends.
Based on enrollment.
Yep.
And in both formulas, that Representative Karen's mentioned, dollars are supposed to follow the student. So when you have a decrease in the amount of enrollment, in theory, you should have a decrease in the amount of aid. The minimum aid is an extraordinary measure this legislature undertakes to prevent that severe impact on the school districts that would be impacted by it. So number one, every time you got those thirty dollars per student, it was in lieu of a cut. Number two, last year, that number increased by one hundred percent. And number three, we have a formula that is based around enrollment. And here's where the ultimate problem lies, because in many parts of the state, including this one, we have declining enrollment, but we have costs that are continuing to increase. And if that situation is left unchecked, we're gonna have a train wreck. And we're very close to it now. So I would say that rather than focusing on minimum aid, which is a stopgap measure to prevent the harm that would otherwise be caused by the formula, we ought to be looking over the long term at the formula itself and try to understand, to the extent that it's possible, how are we gonna account for the increased costs that are not reflected in the decreased enrollment? And I'll give you an example of where we've had some success, just to shine a little bright light in the room. So when we did the Student Opportunity Act, a number of us repeatedly met with the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. It was one of the most powerful collaborations that we have had on education. And the reason for that is we asked the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, why is it that enrollment is decreasing, but costs are increasing? How do we reconcile those two things? And what they told us was that the complexity of the student body is increasing. There's more social emotional needs, there are more students being identified on the autism spectrum, and there's a tremendous amount of cost that goes into transporting students to those outplacement special education schools that just got the fourteen percent increase. So we asked them, what is the number one thing that we might be able to do that would help you? And the answer was include transportation in eligible costs for the special education circuit breaker. And when we sat down to negotiate the Student Opportunity Act, and I was there.
Yes, you were.
We made the message loud and clear that suburban communities needed that form of relief. And ultimately, what got included in the Student Opportunity Act was the inclusion of transportation costs in the special education circuit breaker. In fact, the governor uh funds the fourth year of the implementation of that in her House One budget proposal. And so while we look at these things, I think we need to try to understand that the whole dynamic. And ultimately, the problem is, the formula is enrollment-based. And we have to find a way to begin to address that. Now, if you want to indulge me for a few more minutes, I'll expound even more. So when that Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three was passed, I was actually on the Education Committee. I actually voted against the bill. And I did so because I thought the formula was unfair in the way that it measured suburban communities' ability to pay. And over time, I would say that that has probably been borne out. So in the original nineteen ninety-three act, that foundation budget was supposed to be reviewed periodically. Periodically was thought to mean every three to five years. Guess when it happened? Never. So a group of us worked together and we got legislation passed to reestablish the Foundation Budget Review Committee Commission. Happened in two thousand fifteen. The commission went around the state, many people in this room were there, we all testified. And we made a number of different arguments about the foundation budget, which is the backbone of the problem that we're talking about. And I would argue that the Foundation Budget Review Commission did half the job. It did the half of the job that looked at the alignment between what we were mandating that students get in terms of education and what they were being provided for with resources. And not surprisingly, what the Foundation Budget Review Commission found was there was a huge disparity between state support and the cost to educate a student. That's what resulted in the Student Opportunity Act. So the Student Opportunity Act said, we're gonna square up that difference between the cost of educating a student and the state support for those costs. And it did a pretty good job of it, such a good job of it that in this budget, Governor Healy's House One budget, there's an additional six hundred million dollars to continue to implement the Student Opportunity Act. So you would say, why is it if we're putting six hundred million dollars into chapter seventy, you're still gonna get thirty dollars a student? And the answer is, the Foundation Budget Review Commission didn't do the second half of the job. Now, in order to make sure that that misalignment never happened again, to the extent that it did before, I amended the Student Opportunity Act to ensure that it would be reviewed every ten years. I wanted five, I got ten. I would argue that we need to reconstitute the Foundation Budget Review Commission and we need to look at the second half of the equation. And the second half of the equation is, how do we address the issue of suburban communities and properly assess their ability to pay and properly incorporate that into the dynamic that we have now and going forward? I agree with Representative Karen. Sally's right. Student Opportunity Act was an amazing accomplishment. Doesn't mean we should throw it out the window. What we should do is build on it and say, we, we were able to address a major problem. And in the doing of that, we actually helped a lot of urban school districts, there's no doubt about it. Now it's time for round two. Round two, we need to come back and say, how are we gonna address this problem? It's not going away. There's no projected bubble in enrollment that's gonna get us out of this, so we're gonna all of a sudden have all of these, these kids. And so we have to figure out a way to reconcile the fact that we have decreasing enrollment and increased costs. I'll stop there and take a breath.
He's stellar.
All of this, you know, in this uh three towns have resulted in local taxpayers paying sixty-five percent of ma- going from sixty-five percent of the math to eighty-two percent.
Yeah.
You know, at, you know, at the same time, there's other things, you know, that are either costing or depriving this town's money because of state things. Middleton is assessed, I think, of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year to fund the MBTA. We have no bus lines, we have no train stations, we have, we have the ride, which is not worth two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So if the state didn't take uh out from our pocket, we would have more for education. You know, fairness, you know, to me, you know, encompasses a whole lot more things than, you know, just, you know, one thing, you know, if. Look at, you know, that chart, you know, how can, you know, the state revenue increase that much? And unrestricted general government aid still not be to where it is in two thousand. All of that impacts our ability to fund our regional and our local school systems. Some, something's gotta give.
So, so I, I would suggest, you're right particularly about UGA, unrestricted general government aid. If you look at the trend line, it's going up. And the reason it's going up is because the prior administration made a declaration and the legislature agreed that we would increase UGA by the percentage of increase in state revenue. And we've had some good years. That's why you see that going up. And Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll have agreed to do that same thing. So we are starting to work on that. And the other thing, though, I, I would say, and I don't want the point to be lost, is that when we talk to municipal officials, and you're, you're unique because you walk in kind of both camps, but we, we hear a lot about the increasing share of municipal budgets that's going to schools. And so your point is well taken. And that's why I think we have to address this. When, when we talk about the total numbers and we see all the money that's coming into state government, and it's absolutely amazing, I never thought I would see it. There is a lot of money in the top line going into some of these accounts. The issue is, how do we make sure that we get a better share of it? And, and it has to be based on a defensible strategy and methodology, and that's what we need to work on. But in the meantime, getting to that point is, is not gonna happen this year. It's gonna take a sustained effort. It's probably gonna take another Foundation Budget Review Commission. So what historically our regional delegation has worked on, and we're very pleased to welcome two new members to us, have just begun to feel the frustration that we have over the years. Historically, we have worked on things that don't go through the foundation budget. Because the, in those cases, when we pour money into the top of it, we get a fair amount or a better amount than we would if things went through the formal. So that's why we worked on special education and the circuit breaker. That's why we worked on minimum per pupil aid. That's why we work on regional school transportation, where, again, if we had another chart there, you'd see that we've been inching up. And I feel fairly confident we're gonna inch up again. I know we should be at a hundred percent.
Just like the state promised when it started the program.
But when we have that debate in the Senate, I will reserve a seat for you.
All right.
Say about it.
And, and listen, coming from, you know, I, I'm sure we all have, have districts that aren't uh regional. My other parts of my district are going, why do they get any transportation funds? Because we get none. So, you know, we have to balance, you know, there is that push and pull.
Because we can't charge.
They can charge.
Oh, no, I know, I know. And I know. It's always that. That's, that's my answer to them.
And because we have a statute that says that we're gonna give you a hundred percent.
Right.
And it's not unusual for me to photocopy that statute and pass it out in the chamber so that people will be reminded of that commitment. I, I will tell you, and, and I apologize because these guys have heard me say this a couple of times already, so I apologize for being redundant. But one of the pushbacks that we get when we try to go to a hundred percent, and I try every time, my record's clear. You can see all the budget amendments. You can listen to all the speeches. You can see all the people pass out in the chamber from listening to this. The pushback that we get is that if we give a hundred percent, there'll be no incentive to control the cost. And so that's where we need to work.
Well.
One bidder.
You wanna, so, okay, so do you wanna schedule hour two and we'll, we should talk about that? But I'm just saying, when we talk about this subject, that's the.
That would be okay.
That's, that's the pushback that we get, is that there, there needs to be some incentive to cost control. I think we can get around that.
Who's the, who, like, who are they talking about? Who, who is receiving that incentive? Because if we could control costs, man, we wouldn't have had a fifteen percent increase in, in transportation.
Understood. We, our bus contract went out to bid this year. One bidder responded fifteen percent increase.
Wow.
And, and, and we've been talking, and we've been um at some other school district and talking about the same thing of, you know, we want to do as much as we can to respect the hundred percent in cost, but, but there is an issue if there's a monopoly and it's, oh, it's a hundred, maybe it's a hundred fifty, maybe. So we want to understand that as well, of what's the service cost of transportation and what should it be? So we can understand what that percentage is, because we all sort of, I mean, we don't want to see the increase for you because there's not competition. But we also don't want to feed into that single monopoly, just, so it's just understanding both sides of it. So we can really match the, what the transportation cost should be and make sure that we're trying to.
I don't think I've seen a competitive bus contract in eleven years that have been doing this.
Oh, wow.
Like, we were told recently at uh one of the other district meetings that we had, that almost all of the companies are owned now by a single entity in our region. So even though the letterhead might be different.
Yes.
It all goes back to the same mailbox. So it's a huge problem. Getting drivers is a huge problem. Um, we, we hear you, but I'm just saying, one of the things we're told, and believe me, I'm a crusader on the hundred percent, is that, that doesn't mean we shouldn't work on cost containment at all. And here's a thought, right? So we, and, and I'm gonna think out loud here, I don't know if the press is here, but we just experienced a rate-setting exercise for out-of-district um schools, chapter seven sixty-six approved private schools. And even though we don't like the fourteen percent, there was at least a rate-setting process where somebody made a determination. Might it be time that we think about that for school bus transportation? Just a thought.
Well, I think we're at a point where we have to look at everything.
Mm-hmm.
Let, let's put it in the mix and let's start to rein in costs where we can. And, and support, and, you know.
And, and support, you know, support communities in every other way that we can. I so appreciate your depth of knowledge and experience on this issue, and it's so valuable, even if we don't always agree.
Can I ask a question? So with this out-of-district special education increase, isn't my understanding from what I'm hearing that the way you guys are working to address it is through circuit breaker and versus a direct increase to take up part of that so that we don't get hit? Like, is it all about, you know, like, I know the superintendent's letter and a lot of our letters have said, why doesn't, if it's 14%, usually we get a 2% increase, why doesn't the state take up 12% of the increase? That was what we wanted versus a filtered down.
If it's a circuit breaker, we won't see till FY20.
Right, that, that's going to be the issue.
We only get, I mean, as you know, we are only getting, like, you know, if it's 75% or if you're increasing it to 90%, we're going to take it, but it's still such a percentage of a percentage. You make it three times the foundation rather than four times, you know, it's still so small, once it gets filtered through that formula, that we would prefer you just take 12% on yourselves and give us a 2%, we can handle that.
So, to borrow a phrase from Sally, everything's on the table with this.
Well, I'm.
What's happened so far is that in House One, Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll proposed about a 14% increase in the circuit breaker. And of that 14% increase, $15 million is what they calculate will be the impact of the 14%. But again, there's a lag, because the circuit breaker is a reimbursement program, so that doesn't help you. So we're thinking about other vehicles as well. One of them is not unfamiliar to all of you, it's a pothole account, where we say there's an extraordinary thing that's happened. There actually is a pothole account already in House One, but it's for a different set of circumstances. And, and it has to do with enrollment, re-enrollment that folks haven't counted on, because during COVID, some folks left, and now they're coming back, but, but so it's a different subject. But there is the opportunity to have a vehicle like that to get through the one year. The other thing is though, this 14% is baked in now for every year. And so one of the things that Governor Healy said in filing her budget is, we're going to put in this $15 million with a commitment to look to do the same thing next year. But the problem is, we would still have that gap, so we are looking at everything.
When you say that 14 is baked in for every year, like, this increase, they're not going to go up again, 14%.
Well, we don't, we don't know what's going to happen next, but.
If the 2% increase is going to be built on a 14% base.
I just want to make sure it's not going to go up 14% next year.
Right. And, and to be fair, we don't know what the rate setting commission will do next at OST. And, and so one of the things that a lot of us are doing.
We know what they're not going to do again.
But we're trying, but we're trying to understand better the rationale for that. So, so one of the things, interestingly enough, that we've been told anecdotally is that the Chapter 766 schools wanted to make sure they could compete with you for teacher retention. I think that's an interesting thought. Because I know that you all struggle to get qualified people as well, so, but anyway, that was one of the things we heard. And I apologize for monopolizing the conversation, it's just, once Sally poked me and got me started, I couldn't stop, so.
We're happy to hear from you.
You're the senior member of the delegation, Bruce.
Thanks for that, Sally.
I, you know, I just do want to say, and we've said it before, when we came last year, two years ago, annually, we come and do this, we, we enjoy it, it's good for us, it's keeps us kind of on our toes and aware of what you're living with right here in the high school library, grapple with your budget. We all work together. You know, the House, there's kind of a mystery to the Ways and Means Committees on both sides, but it's a little bit of a kabuki dance, but it's a lot of, like, you know, driving numbers and looking at data, they're all very bright people. We will all be kind of, and as I said, I don't think there's anyone who isn't hearing, thanks to the Association of School Superintendents and school committees, that have made this, you know, raised the alarm about this issue, so we hear you, we're listening.
Well, and not, and not just about the 14% increase, I mean, we, we all are working with multiple school systems that are looking at overrides, and, and quite frankly, overrides that are not likely to be successful, so that's happening, you know, right nearby, and it's happening throughout the state, so several of our new colleagues are experiencing the same thing, you know, the suburban or rural communities, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it is, I think, you know, something that is coming to a head. And people are looking and having to make, you know, substantial cuts to their, to their, to the services, to the teachers, to, you know.
Right, well, and it's not just that, it's, everything's interconnected, it's like, all of us are these small budgets, because we're all this group of small towns. And it's, you know, for more share, more of the share has to go in one direction, then it goes less to other things, and there's, you know, we have hundreds of services that we provide all our residents and want to continue to do that and have to make really hard decisions, and we recognize that, you know, these communities are small budget, I mean, it's amazing you're doing what you're doing with the budgets that you have and that, and I applaud all of you for it. I've been in municipal government for most of my career until now, and it's, this is a hard time of year to try to, I mean, you're cutting things that are very needed, and we want to understand that, and really understand the issue, the core issues, and then the, where the problems really are, so, and understand from our veteran colleagues, we're only a couple of weeks in here, and just really want to under, understand from you and help you as much as we can, I mean, we, we want everyone to be successful and give you that, the tools to be successful. And it's really helpful for me to understand some of what's happened over years, why when you put all this money in the top of the bucket, you're still only getting the same amount over 20 years? Why that's happening, so we can help, and we can understand from both our colleagues, but folks on the ground, what's happening, so. Anyway.
And I should also say, Representative Jones texted me, and I was on the way here. He, he, he is not going to be able to be here, but he's equally is committed to all of this, and is a very important part of this delegation, so.
And he'll be, oh, I'm sure.
He'll be vocal.
Completely, yeah, and so, very lucky to have, you know, Republican leadership, minority leadership, and both, like, you know, the leader of both branches in your, in your wheelhouse, and you're, and that's very cool, it's very helpful. Budget time, I got to be calling Brad, actually. To do this.
I want to go back to that minimum aid thing. Chapter 70, per student at Masco, from FY22 to FY23, dropped. You know, the, you got a $30, you know, or $60 increase in FY23, but if you, when you do the math of actual students, it dropped.
The total of the per student number?
The per student number.
Okay, then we need to look at that, because that doesn't make sense.
So your Chapter 70 number in, this is in, in House, well, it's all agreed upon. It's not going to change in our budget, right?
Probably not.
Yeah.
Probably not.
So 5.4 million, does that jibe with what your?
For.
Are you saying between 22 and 23?
22 and 23.
Oh, well, that's because 23 only, the House One, oh, okay, 22 and 23, okay. That doesn't make sense.
Well.
If, if enrollments did the.
So, was that, was that not when enrollment, enrollment dropped?
Enrollment did drop.
Right.
Like twice.
So the overall number is going to drop if enrollment.
Thing per student, not.
Per student. So, you know, it, it, it might be, you know, based on, you know, the year that the money comes in, and is it that year's enrollment or the previous year's enrollment? And all, but, you know, you, I, I did FY22, Chapter 70 money, FY22 enrollment. Did it for FY23, came up with a lesser number per student.
And did the number of students drop?
Yes.
But he's saying per.
Per student.
But per student.
So, you know, when, you know, if, if, to hold harmless, you know, you, I don't you have to look at the per student, you know, if, if a district get $3,300 per student this year, shouldn't get at least $3,300 per student the next year? You know, if it goes up, great, but it shouldn't fall.
Are we talking minimum aid, or are we talking total Chapter 70?
Right, that's when you get into those various.
Right. After 70.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
So that's where, that's where the issue.
So, you know, in, in effect, you know, my, you know, our kids got a couple hundred dollars less per kid.
Total Chapter 70.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, you know.
Ask the DSE people when we did that phone call.
No, because I just did this calculate. On, you know, Bruce was talking.
I mean, it, it is, it is sort of, yeah, it, it, it's, it's hard to go apples to apples, because there are those caveats, you know, so, so it's, it's hard, you know, I mean, I think we've all seen people say, well, why did this district get 20% more and this district got less? You know, it, it's, it's very nuanced, and so you really have to kind of break it down, down further, but it, it doesn't mean.
You know, in, in the end, I think, you know, people would feel better if they think that they are being treated fairly, you know, and no matter what the situation, you know, is, and, you know, if you know, you, you read, oh, biggest increase in, you know, state education, you know, right, 624 more, million more dollars, and you get less per student, it doesn't sit right.
So cost of per student is not sitting, yeah.
Yeah, one way that we might begin to understand that is what was the number for required net school spending in each of those years, and how do they compare?
Uh, it stayed about the same.
Because if there was a decrease in required net school spending, that would help to explain.
I mean, it, it, you know, it, our.
And I would like to, and we, I have forged a nice relationship with DSE and literally said, you got to help me, you got to, I, I need your number crunching people to take a call with my select board school committee guy. And they said, okay, sure, and, and we did it, and then I wound up having to be in a hearing, so I, I wasn't actually there for it, but I jumped on at the end. And I don't know that I could get another one of those, but I'm sure if you emailed those number crunching people, they would be happy to.
Yeah.
You know, because that's too granular for me.
We need, we need to understand that.
Yeah.
The net school spending total for Masco, 16.3 million in FY20, 16.5 million FY21, 16.4 million FY22, 16.3 million in FY23.
Okay.
Staying about the same.
Required net school spending, not actual net school, okay.
And I don't know if that is, does that jibe with your?
I don't know where it's coming from, those numbers, I have to see.
I know, I mean.
I mean, it's, you know, the, the, what we've seen in Chapter 78 has been relatively flat.
Yeah, absolutely.
For the increases among all the towns, or, or was it relatively even, or was some towns hit a lot more than others?
No, there was a shift towards Boxford. The required net school spending pretty much stayed the same, but again, there, you know, there are fluctuations in enrollment year to year, and so that's, this year, Boxford is the lion's share of the, the assessment increase compared to the other two communities.
On top of the. On top of the transportation.
It was between the shift between elementary and Masco. Yeah, okay, yeah, I was, I'm just trying to understand from. Yeah, because it happened two years ago, to Topsfield, and it is, it's a combination of between the town with the elementaries and then the regional, and then all these other factors, including how they assess your ability to pay. So I was really happy to hear you say that, because a town like Topsfield and Boxford especially, where there's not a commercial base, and property values are impacting the tax base, what people are assessed, but they're not moving or benefiting from their property value in the 30 years that they're living there or longer. And we, you know, accommodations, which makes it even harder, so. Correct, so, you know, there's something needs to shift there, I think, for communities like these, because it's just, yeah, keep doing.
Is Boxford looking at an override?
Yes.
I know Topsfield.
Oxford and Topsfield are looking at it.
I know, sorry, I don't represent Oxford, so I'm not as.
No, we're not.
I don't think so.
Middleton is.
Is not.
Fortunate, because, I mean, it's like you were saying, you know, some of these overrides, if they don't pass, I mean, we fought hard here. You know, you may have heard me get emotional earlier about guns in schools, but I also get emotional about having enough teachers for our students who are still, you know, reeling from a mental health crisis that happened before the pandemic, that was then, you know, exhumated through the pandemic and still hasn't been taken care of. And we don't, we can't get rid of any of our teachers, so they're on their front line to see our kids and to, and to help keep them healthy. Like, you know, forget even the education part, we want our kids to be healthy, and, and so, if our overrides fail, then what?
I mean, I think, like, the, the episode of during the pandemic made it, you all know this already, but so abundantly evident how important these relationships in schools as a, a place where people are together matters.
In your film, in community.
Escalated, everything, all the problems that we're already, we were already facing just went, escalated. And so, it should, if anything, just put a spotlight on the essential priority of schools for the entire community. The health of your kids reflects the health of.
So another victory that we had, as a result of the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable, is they last year stressed to us the importance of social, emotional learning and mental health. And the Senate included in its version of the budget, a $6 million grant program for that. The House agreed to it. It got adopted, and Governor Healy has proposed that again in her House One proposal. My hope is that we're actually going to be increasing that number, because it, we know that it's not enough, but at least we established a B chat.
And where did that, where does that go, like, where does that? Okay, where does it come out?
It's a grant that's given through DSE, that's a great question. And there is no convoluted formula by which it flows. So, yeah.
I'm holding up this pen. I do want to underscore the availability of the Behavioral Health Help Line. It's a really, it's real and it's effective. And when the Commissioner of Mental Health came to the Ways and Means Committee yesterday, she said, if I can leave you with one message, it's get help early. Get help early. If you're not, if you think your child isn't quite, if you're concerned, if your friend is, you're watching your friend, and, you know, you can call this number, and a human being will pick up the phone, and they can help you and refer you to some resources. It, it is really life-changing, so I, I just, I know that a, a pen is not, is, it's, you know, you take it.
And we're going to hear more actually about that later, and I know last year, we had this, I think it was last year, I don't know, I'm in a bubble of time, but we had talked about the availability of mental health resources, because there aren't enough psychologists and counselors and therapists out in the world, so we need to be doing something into our education system, higher education, higher, higher postgraduate system to get these people trained, or to incentivize them to want, to want to be counselors. I don't know, I know we talked about it, I don't know if anything's changed there. Opening up more programs in schools, I mean, they're, you know, I, I know of a kid came from Israel, really smart kid, can't get into a postdoc, a, a PhD program, because they take one or two kids in, I'm calling them kids, but one or two people in a year to train. We need to, we need program, I mean, these are, all the schools in Boston, they're taking in less than a handful of kids per year to be trained as psychologists. Like, we need more than.
Because they can't get faculty is part of it, right? Yeah, and it's layer upon layer, and.
Be training way more people.
So we did, last year passed the Mental Health ABC Bill in the waning days of the legislative session. And it has a heavy focus on pediatric mental health, particularly on pediatric boarding in our emergency departments, because we still all get calls.
Got one yesterday.
About kids that have been in the ED for, you know, weeks. So we, we did a couple of things, it won't solve the whole problem, but I'll just give you the highlights, because I've talked a lot, and Costa's already calculating something else. Maybe it's some formula. I'll be quick, but a couple of things that it did was remove the requirement of a determination of need to add pediatric mental health beds in Massachusetts, which is a big deal, so they can now be built without state bureaucracy. mental health beds in Massachusetts, which is a big deal, so they can now be built without state bureaucracy. The second thing that it did uh is compel insurance companies to cover uh one mental health screening a year, because they cover one physical a year. The third thing that it did was create a searchable database, which is still being built, so that when a kid is in the hospital, then that hospital can search to see where a bed is in a very comprehensive way. We've heard stories of beds being located as far away as Virginia, because there wasn't anything available locally. On the pipeline, um, there's a special commission looking at um tuition forgiveness and loan forgiveness to encourage folks to go into the field. There's also a study that I worked on that's in the bill that is gonna examine why a lot of the providers will not accept anything but cash. Because that becomes an impediment for a lot of families to be able to access that care.
Because it's such a pain for them to get reimbursed by insurance.
And there was some parity language.
Oh, absolutely.
As well, which is gonna hopefully help address some of the insurance.
Yeah.
Insurance.
Yeah, yeah. Well, what what's interesting about that is that the first parity law went into effect in about two thousand. There was another one in two thousand and fourteen, and we we've never had full parity.
We've been talking mental health parity for thirty years.
Yeah, this is a big initiative by our colleague Fred Berry.
Yes, yes.
Would to get the mental health.
The Mental Health Parity Act.
What is parity and like, you mean being parity of what you built?
Coverage of uh for mental wellness.
And and.
Same way that we cover. Yeah, physical health, so you have, you know, a knee issue, you have a heart issue, you go and you get it dealt with. And you submit and it's covered and off you go. Uh, but for mental wellness for forever until like now, um, you were kind of on your own, I I I would say maybe until like, I don't know when exactly they be, it began that you could get like six wellness visits a year or something like that. But I do know practitioners who have said, I'm not doing it. I'm not, I am a one person shop and I'm not going to go through all of the difficulty of billing and um I'm kind of hoping that people like that will rethink it now that it's not gonna be, I I think streamlined billing practices are are a part of this too. You know, it's a lot different than it was ten years ago.
But but we've got a long way to go, the the bill looks to build the pipeline of providers, make the providers more accessible, make screening more common, and ensure that we have the infrastructure, because the other thing that we've heard is that schools work really hard to get somebody, am I, what am I?
You're almost in Kathlina's lap.
The other thing that we've heard is that schools do their best to get a student ready for a warm handoff to a provider outside the school system and the provider's not there.
Yeah.
So we we have to do better.
I know, we we've been working on these tier one, is it tier one or three? Um, supports, and I remember when they were presenting it to us last year, one of the one of the uh hopes was to do like a overall assessment on all students, but the concern with that was that you're gonna find all these concerns and where are we sending them? What are we doing with that? So.
Yeah, and and another thing that I've I've talked about, and I'm sort of, as a newbie, trying to figure out how to, but how to help um people that are providers manage their own vicarious trauma, so they stay, right, so they stay in the field. Because I think the other thing we're seeing is post pandemic, you know, hardworking social workers who were working ten, twelve hours a day are burning out and they're out. Or they're leaving all of these amazing nonprofits and they're going into the private practice where they're only doing cash and they're not taking any insurance. And so institutional knowledge is going with them, these connections and resources are going with them. And, you know, I don't think, I I I think frankly, that's true with teachers and first responders as well, but right now, to me, the focus needs to be on particularly mental health providers for children, how how do we get them there and how do we keep them there?
Is um the legislature involved in the treatment of the opioid settlement funds or is that just a D O R issue?
Because we are.
Because, you know, it that, you know, needs to be sort of rationalized, because right now, as I understand it, the advice, you know, directive from D O R is to put it in a stabilization fund, which for our towns means, you know, a more than a year goes by before we can actually do something useful with them. So if they can be put into a different type of account, then we can start helping the people that need it much sooner.
Absolutely, we we've actually heard from one of your colleagues about that, Costa.
I'm not surprised.
About whether or not we might contemplate something that's more akin to an enterprise fund than a stabilization fund, so money could go in and out more expediently. So, yeah, the answer is yes. Thank you.
Other people around the table that have comments or questions, I want to make sure that we get them all addressed. I I I'm thrilled to hear that you guys are um all working on the stuff that we are concerned about, I wish that there was quicker answers and hope.
We do too.
So do we. Bring Bruce because.
For most of you, the second time this month that you're at Masco, so thank you for your attention, the CPAC.
Yeah, the CPAC meeting was excellent, that was so informative and encouraging and um yeah, no, it was a wonderful, wonderful dedicated, really sharp group of parents who were, it was exciting, actually. I told you, I think my, I think many um special ed parents in other communities were, would be so envious to see the crowd that was, you know, the the number of people who were working together, uh, it was a really great meeting. Um, and then we're coming back, aren't we? Is there something else going on?
You're welcome whenever you want.
Yes, indeed. I mean, I just, I just want to say as a new, you know, new to this delegation, I'm honored to be here, I love having the historic knowledge and and really understanding what's going on, but I'm a parent, I've got young children, I've experienced this pandemic with you, my youngest was in kindergarten. So, you know, was in third grade and I feel like just now are we starting to like be able to take a deep breath, like, okay, maybe we're gonna be okay. And that's long and it's exhausting and it's hard to kind of just always feel like you're, you know, when can you take that deep breath? So I I I hear you on all of these things, I I, you know, Kristen also has a child, I mean, we, that's probably part of why as newbies we are here. Um, and so while we may not be able to, you know, change the world in one session, we are certainly doing our best to to build those relationships, make those inroads and and chip away at it where we can for you guys.
And the more we know from you and the more this type of information and, you know, quantitative, qualitative, the more we can help advocate. Um, and I know that's helpful and I thank you for the information you've sent so far, but just as you keep doing calculations and um highlighting things, it helps us um to um advocate and just like what Adrian said, it it's we both have young kids in the school systems and we get that it's so much more than just, you know, just academic, it's so much more. Um, anyway, we support, for sure.
Yeah, I I emailed Stella's um video to you, Sally, and just because I had your email headly, so if, or readily, and so if you could share it with your colleagues.
I'll be delighted, honored to share it, and um it's just always a pleasure to come up to Masco. Um, um, so thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Patient coming, all of you, all three of you, four of you, all four of you, and anyone, five of you, um, please, don't, six. Keep it coming.
We don't have to discriminate, we'll send them to all of.
Thank you. We don't need to exert geographical lines here, Sally, this isn't. But we we do appreciate our relationship with you and, you know, we we appreciate being able to have frank conversations like this one, uh, but also a lot of the conversations that happen in between, so thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your, for your time, I appreciate it.
Always appreciate you coming and especially Bruce, your eloquence and knowledge of historical knowledge on just about any topic.
Costa, the reason I don't have kids in school is because I've been doing all of that information gathering. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You.
Yeah.
Hi, Stella.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you and your next steps going forward, I appreciate you seeing you again. Take care. How are you?
How are you?
Okay, moving along. Don't want to stay and listen to our capital plan.
This one's you.
Capital plan, I know we had a plan, I'm having a blank because I've gotten all. Um, that's great, um, that was very helpful. So, um, we were presented with the capital plan, um, a couple meetings back. We know there's a lot of work to be done with it. The problem is, if we continue to do the work right now, that we're gonna be having a bunch of turnover in our committee in the next. We have three more meetings, including tonight with this committee as it stands. So, the thought of.
Three more weeks?
Of this committing.
Two, two more meetings in April with this, with this committee as it's currently.
Before elections.
For the election.
So, right. So the idea to start digging in on how we want to do it and then start again with new committee members to bring them up to speed seemed a little um a waste of time. Um, I know that we have discussed forming a uh greater task force subcommittee, I think we had discussed um having town administrators um work with administration and some committee members together to kind of dig in a little bit more. But I just wanted to hear how everybody felt about that. Um, I know we had put it off because we needed to get through the budget. Um, we obviously have, you know, a lot of work to do on it, but it seems it seems like we need to give it the right amount of attention with the right people sitting at the table.
Now, because there will be much turnover, I I think the next configuration of the committee would benefit from some thoughts of this committee as to how to, how and when to proceed. The other thing, you know, mentioning, when you mentioned about, you know, the town administrators, you know, I would think, you know, that is a good idea to and I would initially just limit it to sort of a staff representative, you know, whether it's the town administrator or a designee and someone from, you know, from Masco administration sort of, you know, looking at it, because, you know, everybody is just, you know, professionals, you know, have, has knowledge and cares about, you know, maintenance of the investment, you know, that their communities have made. So, sort of, to working on the sort of technical things of what, you know, needs to be done, how to evaluate, you know, what's to be done, I think that could be a very useful group. When it comes to the point of uh talking about, you know, timing of of things, that's where sort of a broader group of, you know, FinCom members, select board members, you know, meeting, you know, with that group would be particularly helpful.
Oh, I I do like the idea of the task force with town administrators and administration and maybe one or two school committee members getting started soon, like before, like the May election, just, I feel like if you wait to do that until after the election and get the full school committee going, that doesn't really happen until like August and then you're then it's September and then boom, it's March and it's the end of the school year. I feel that happens a lot.
Pretty much how it feels, yeah.
Yeah, and um, and it it is important, right, to get that moving, especially the timing, I don't know if you have plans for a fall town meeting or whatever. I, but I think if you don't start at least with like the administration and the town administrators having one meeting before the end of the school year. Um, it it just to get it in everyone's brain that it started and it's moving, instead of doing the introduction and the beginning stuff in September, I, it's too much time to not start until then, because I think you have enough information to start picking through it and talking about it. That would be my recommendation.
I agree, and I would, I would want a school committee member or two as part of that group.
Yeah.
Just to steer the the greater vision of the.
I I think that would be great, I wouldn't get hung up with the turnover, pick some people that aren't up for the election, yeah.
Yeah, now in terms of, you know, timing, you know, I yeah, think, you're, the earliest would be, you know, next May, you know, for a variety, you know, of reasons. One is there is no any type of election scheduled, you know, in the fall. You know, there's no state election, there's no federal election, and to try to do a uh sort of town meetings and town elections, you know, is cumbersome. The other part is the is a large project and it needs, you know, sort of education and, you know, it's going to take, I think, you know, a minimum of, you know, sixteen months. Or, you know, or thereabouts from, and really, we're just at the beginning phases of, you know, what we need to do, when we need to do it, how we talk about it, so that hasn't even really, you know, been defined. So to try to do something, you know, in the fall in terms of, you know, ed, public education, you know, the the summer is a black hole, you know, people, you know, are off vacations, you know, they're not really focused then and it takes about till mid September. You know, I've done a lot of several of successful ballot questions. And I'm happy to talk about processes that have been successful, you know, in Middleton and what it takes to be successful, you know, you know, whenever the time is appropriate.
Thank you, so am I hearing from people that um maybe if Mike and or Jeff establish this task force immediately, you know, like send out some kind of an invite, whatever immediate means, it's obviously not tomorrow.
Yeah, I I just think from the town administrator's perspective, getting through town meetings might be kind of their priority right now.
But the email can.
We're getting something together so that we have a meeting.
On the calendar.
Late May, early June.
Um, and if people on this committee, especially the six that aren't running for reelection this year, or right, that that seats aren't up this year, maybe if it went, um, they email me and I'll appoint one or two. Um, if that is, works for people and we'll get one or two on that committee and it will be a plan, because if you can do that towards the end of May and beginning of June, there's no, there's no reason that it can't continue to have conversations in the summer, you know, even once a month, so that it is well underway come, come September and then we can, you know, pool our resources for people who know how to successfully get an override passed or, you know, special something, so.
I'm a thought. I'm thinking maybe just start with the administration until we do the reorganizing. Point, two members, then we get reorganized, I don't know, just a thought. But if we just start with the administration, at least we have a constant.
Well, starting with people that aren't up for, I mean.
I'll just say not it, between turf and policy.
Oh, did you say not it?
That's fair, though, that is. I think we just want some representation, I don't think we want to just totally give, and it is kind of our oversight role. You know, right, so we need somebody, even if we have to turn over and transition to somebody else, you can kind of download what's in your head.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it could, it doesn't have to remain, like you said, it could start off with one person and shift.
It can shift every year also, like it just, it's idea of making sure that it's there.
Two things, one is, you know, our, in in Middleton, you know, our town administrator is, we have an interim, we have a vacancy, it it, she's kind of stretched at a point and I'm not sure when we'll have a new town administrator, you know, we had a glitch there.
Oh.
Person we appointed accepted the job backed out. And, you know, the other thing, you know, in terms of being, you know, successful in a you know, large ask, it needs a consistent voice. Every one that has happened, you know, in Middleton, the voice that was advocating for it, you know, sort of was viewed as the spokesperson did not change during the process.
You know, the challenge of our position.
Was it a town administrator? Was it a select board member? Like, what was the position of this?
The people that, you know, yeah, in, for instance, the latest, you know, this municipal complex, you know, the that there was a committee appointed by the select board and they guided the process from making the in the decision advocating, you know, for explaining it. And the major public voice of that was the chair of that committee. Who is also the town engineer in Wakefield. So, you know, he was sort of a substantial person known in the, you know, community. Others, the select board has never been the chief advocate of any of these projects. Always been citizens working outside the select board.
Well, having the town administrators, you know, will definitely be an asset because they will be, once we point it.
They they will certainly, you know, help, you know, in sort of shaping the problem, you know, the solutions, you know, et cetera. But the advocacy, you know, has, I think, has to be a a non-staff person. And there will probably need to be one voice for each town, community.
Right, yeah. I think that's a good point, but at least having, you know, a town administrator there to speak on what we've discussed.
And it doesn't have to be, it could be a town administrator or they're designated. So if there's a staff person that they want to attend, especially in middle, that it started. Especially in Middleton where maybe there's someone.
So there there, you know, it, I'm not saying, you know, don't start, just work on it. But when the point comes when, you know, you have shaped a sort of a dissolution to the problem. And then you have to sort of sell that solution, you know, to the greater public, you know. It certain steps need to be done and certain consistent messages and voices need to be heard. That's what has worked in Middleton in the past.
Well, I have to say that a secondary benefit out of all of this will be the the continual working together with the teams, the towns and and administration, um, which I think.
And get to know each other even better.
Yeah. Well, and being team team players together like is a great, I think, a great thing for us. So, um, okay, so it sounds like.
Our five, when you you said citizens of those appointed committees, so like appointed citizens.
Okay, so she meant citizens of the town.
Yeah, the the municipal, you know, complex, you know, was a, you know, a committee appointed by the, you know, the select board. The passage of, you know, the CPA, you know, was, you know, individuals that were on the master plan committee at at that time, which was an appointed committee by the town moderator. You know, the How Manning School Project, that was a committee that was independent, you know, citizens, you know, that it had some, you know, a select board member on it, you know, and and other representation, but it it was sort of a separate committee that, you know, led, you know, the passage of, you know, acceptance of that.
Yeah, but there's actually a back in the middle school that has the name of. Yeah, the school building committee. They had like, I counted them, must.
For this building, yeah.
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 I think that, yeah. Um, okay, so it sounds like people are jiving with this plan, correct? Okay, so maybe in a meeting or two, you can tell us if there's been a contact or something just. And if you guys are interested, and even if you're not, please send me an email saying that you'll do it. Um, okay. Budget communication plan. Um, so before this meeting, uh, there was a communicate, uh, what's it called? CR, uh, Community Relations Subcommittee Meeting to kind of start this conversation going about our communication plan. Um, so I had sent an email after getting clarification from Mike. And actually, Zilly, you had a copy of it since you read it. Do of what we can as a school district do and what we can't. I think we should start by you reading that, because you can find it. Nice and clear, because I know after our last meeting, we were a little confused, um, on what we can and can't do.
Oh, do you want me to actually read it?
I do.
Uh, you said that we can send district-wide emails with information about our budget and asking for the committee to support it. We can send out mailer with similar information using district funds. We cannot send out similar information about voting on the ballot for the override. We can use our personal emails and our personal social media to spread the word. So we should not use Masco's, uh, C Facebook account for that as it would be considered school district property. So it's basically, you can disseminate information, but you can't say vote this way. Fair nutshell?
You can't use a public resource that would in any way influence a ballot question.
For the ballot questions, right. But I think that when you said that the other week, I think then that there was misunderstanding about, like, you can't use it.
Yeah, Tasha, Tasha's, you'd be into that. So yes, so so for instance, you know, I can write a very long letter to the community and say, please come to town meeting and support our budget. Absolutely fine. Even though there's going to be an override and a ballot question the next week, I can't, you can't even mention it.
Yeah.
Um, it's it's even that information piece because it it's the, trying to remember what board actually governs this from the state, I think it's the elections board. Even just trying to do something that's informational is can can be construed as an endorsement.
But informational about our budget is.
Can't talk about the, when you reference the ballot part.
So don't reference ballots, reference only.
Just talk about town. Just talk about our budget and town meeting.
Well, and one thing that's nice for us, that is because it's not the same in all three towns anyway, that's we wouldn't, mascanomit, wouldn't be talking about the individuals, towns' choices to have overrides. We're just talking about our budget.
Right.
But then what happens post-town meeting?
Well.
Then the ballot question, we have, we cannot use a public resource to advocate.
Support our budget after town meeting.
And as an individual, it is.
On not at mascanomit.
But you can't use your Masco email address to do it. That's the issue.
So is.
See, Boston got busted years ago for.
I'm asking just. Town meeting is usually a week before.
Yeah.
Valid question.
Well, saying, can we still say after the town meeting, please support the budget?
Yeah.
Can't use a district resource to do that.
Yeah. Once town meeting's over, it's personal.
Once town meeting's over, it's really, yeah, you're gonna have to use your own personal.
Okay.
And yeah, the other alternative is forming a ballot question committee.
Correct.
And using the resources of that committee to advocate.
Can school committee members be on that?
Sure.
Yes.
But again, you can't use full resources to do.
So we could just form a committee of ourselves and just use our personal emails?
Use your personal emails, you meet at the public library, you fundraise privately.
And, you know, get a couple of non-school committee, you know, members, you know.
The spend, we can't just use the assets of.
I use, yeah, any public resource.
All right, the public resources end at the town meeting.
Right.
So I think we should concentrate on the town meeting to start with what needs to happen there, which is passing our budget, period. Whether that is in one or two questions, depending on what town you are, but passing our budget and and passing our, um, our capital, our turf, um, question. So we started spitballing ideas and, you know, we are, talked about this before. We're really missing a newspaper right now because Mike's email that he has just offered to write with some FAQs in it, um, will go out to everybody in Masco, but we don't have. It doesn't go any further than Masco and the people that show up to town meetings, as we know, often aren't Masco people. They're often, you know, people with kids out of school or families that just live in town. So we want to get, one, we want to get all the Masco people, you're hearing me. We want to get all the Masco families to town meeting to be supporting this. It's super important, but we also need to get the information to the people outside of the community. So we started talking about a mailer since you had suggested that. And the first thing was that we want to kind of get this FAQ document put together. So we can either start spitballing some ideas of what should be going on to this FAQ thing. And then Patty and I with anybody who's better than me, I don't know if Patty felt good at this, but someone who can put this into Canva or something that looks pretty. And, you know, we can kind of form that. And we were talking about talking to how to do mailings. Snail mail, but how do how do we do it? Talking to our, um, our clerks, our town clerks about if there's any way that they can push out email information to the townspeople.
Like Mike's email, like for something else.
Yeah, I mean, it's the mailing would be through the post office, through direct mail to every.
Oh, I guess I was back on email. You're still talking about mail mails.
Yeah, so snail mail through the post office, but an email like through, um, Middleton has, you know, with serbs that people have signed up for. Something. And will you guys also have the newsletter, which I don't know if there'll be another one that comes out before town meeting, since I feel like it was fairly.
It was.
So, um, so you know how to do it at the post office? Like, we don't pay like forty eight cents.
Uh, there's a, there's a bulk rate you pay. Yeah, I emailed or texted my mother-in-law because she did that in Topsfield for the the Council on Aging. And she thought it was to send something out to every household. She will call that it was eight hundred dollars or so. She was gonna get an exact figure to me at the, at some point.
For Tops, which is the smallest of the three.
What'd you say, for Topsfield?
Yes.
I think three towns, the other two towns are bigger.
Do we have, um, we have some funds in the school budget, right? That's not a concern, is it?
Okay. Um, so, I mean, I think it's super important that everybody hear a clear message about why our budget is increasing. I mean, I I feel, you know, from these conversations, speaking with our red, our legislative body here, you know, it's like, we hear it all the time, but most people who show up at town meeting have no idea. So.
I just kind of like, if I can just ask, like, is the, we've had increases in years past we've never done, I that I've been here, I haven't seen a mailer done. Is this your feeling only different because there's overrides? Is that the reason this year feels different?
Well, I know when we've had overrides in the past, we also had the newspaper. And so we did use, I feel like this is filling in for that because I know that we did do some, like, the superintendent was interviewed by the paper and explained what was in the budget, when there wasn't an override. And.
And we did, we had specific articles too.
Yeah, we did. We 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 had press releases and stuff, but now I think that's, for me, in my head, that's what this is covering.
Covering. It's because it's getting the people outside of the community, the Masco community, yeah.
The only difference of of those other avenues are people who are looking, reading, learning. This is like, when you get something in the mail, you feel like, oh, this is something that's important enough that they had to make a special mailer for. Like, my feeling of it feels different.
Is that a bad thing?
Not necessarily. I just, I don't. It's it's a chunk of change to something and that does it have, is the value of it worth doing? That's all. I just wanted to think that through because.
Personally, I think we should, I hope if we do this and it's successful, I hope we continue to do it. I mean, we we've we've talked around this table for years about how we need to engage the the community, not just members of the school committee, but our school community, but but all of the community members in our three towns. And, you know, this, if this is one small step doing that, that'll be, you know, that'll be good.
Chris, that a question?
Is Salem news effective at all?
I don't know. Well, does anyone here, like, I I I see articles that are posted on Facebook from, about athletes. Anyone see anything?
I think my grandparents get it.
That's not a bad demographic, though.
Right, exactly.
The last time there was any article on the tri-town, any of the tri-towns was last September. There was an article about Oxford.
That wasn't. That's not that long ago. Can we be using this as a, um, for capital plan? I know that's gonna be an override, but it's kind of this kind of a mailing or whatever. We can be talking about that, like.
And yeah, I mean, if if you're talking, again, if you're talking about advocating for town meeting, yes.
And the capital plan will have to start at town.
Plan will have to go through town meeting.
Or at least a, at least a bulletin as to what's like, it can be a beginning of the communication plan for the capital plan too.
And we use, um, Facebook push ads. It's short money and you can hit thousands of people and you can segment it by age group and town. There's a whole, there's a lot of ways to segment it.
Does that cost money? I've never done that.
Hundred bucks might hit nine thousand people.
Who are on Facebook, right?
Who are on Facebook.
Who who does it come from?
Like an ad?
It paid, sponsored by, it'd probably be our MRST, that's not the regional school district.
So like Masco's Regional School District would put out an ad on Facebook or does it have to be like Masco School Committee Facebook page?
I have to think about it.
I think it has to. Sounds like something to look into.
You're talking about ads, right?
Well, I think that, yes, multiple ways to, I I I.
An ad is what Chris.
Yeah, but if we're spending money on on, um, mailers, I I mean, I think that we need to do everything. I think that this is going to be the beginning of the communication two point O that we are going to blanket, um, you know, our community with information about Masco, um.
Can we use, when we were just explaining the budget towns, can we use like Scott Morrison's email, like, can we get to the dry town distribution list?
He might have his own stuff going on.
He's got his own stuff going on, honestly. He's actually even booked.
It could be doing you.
Our auditorium to have a budget forum for for Topsfield families coming up in a couple of weeks.
For the elementary.
Yeah.
Budget. Can we be doing the forum at the Council on Aging in Oxford?
You you can do that.
What did you ask?
You just have to set it up.
Should we host a budget forum for the Council on Aging?
Yeah, so I was, I've been trying to look into how to get into the Council on Aging. Get on their docket. I don't even, I don't know how to.
I could help you in Topsfield.
Yeah.
Easy peasy.
Yeah, yeah, and and until the new facility is built, it's almost not worth it because you'll hit maybe ten to twelve people.
Yeah, that was, Oxford's not open yet either.
Will they have a new one?
The April fifteenth is the grand opening.
Opening, although they're they're kind of, I heard today they're. They're still shooting, still shooting for the fifteenth, but right now they're.
Cocktail party, yeah. A fancy house.
Do we ever have any representation at the pre-town meetings?
At the.
Like the towns.
Oh, and they could sometimes, yeah.
You do go to moderator forum.
Is there one this year?
I haven't seen, it's not on the, it wasn't, so I'll I'll check again. Let's see if they've added anything.
I looked this morning and there wasn't one.
Okay. Doesn't mean, I'm surprised because they have been.
It's something that. I, it's something that Andy started. I think Jackie will probably continue it. And it's usually the Thursday before the town meeting. Uh, there's also the Middleton's budget hearing is tomorrow. Where the warrant and budget is, are going over.
So I know Boxford does do one, just I'm only remembering them over Zoom right now because I think I only went to, though. I didn't go to them pre-COVID, so I can look into ours. I mean, because they do not have a big attendance, but the people that go are the people that are gonna go to the, the town meeting.
And if they get their questions answered there, it helps on the town meeting.
Yeah.
It's videoed for us.
Oh.
Website.
Yeah, it's.
They video it and put it on the town website.
Okay.
Record it.
Oh.
Attendance, you know, there's never been more than seven people there. And sometimes it's just me and the town clerk and town moderator there.
Seven people might have ten friends, so each.
It's true. So I think that's a good idea, like, um, what are they called?
A moderator's.
Moderator forum, yeah.
Monitor.
Topsfield doesn't have one on the calendar at the last, this year yet. Uh, he, the moderator is also not running for reelection, so maybe he's just not doing one because.
No, neither is ours.
But, um, at the last listening session, Bill, you were there, we were, there was some conversation about maybe having like a town meeting one-on-one. Um, something or other, but it's not exactly a moderators forum. It's more, we realized the last listening session, we had, there were a lot of elementary school families came to talk to the select board.
They took over your meeting?
They took over the whole, it was fine, it was great. But there were a lot of people who were like, so how does town meeting work? And I was like, oh, yes, okay. So we're at this phase where you seem to be like, this is what you do, this is how you, where you sit.
How you. Raise your hand. Um, okay, so, um, just in the absence, in the, in the respect of time, I would say, I mean, I think that we know the reasons why the, um, our budget went up. I think, you know, there was a few points that are very clear of, as to why it went up. And I think, you know, as we're all advocating for the importance of what we kept in, um, you know, we kind of have this united front for pushing forward this. So if people have like things that they feel are important to, um, put in this document, which is, uh, FAQ, I would say let's just send it, um, send it to me and Patty. Patty and I are gonna start it and then hand it off to, um, somebody to make it pretty.
Go ahead, a pretty good bullet list on the turf too.
Yes, you did.
I just had a comment, um, I feel like we've been, we haven't changed our narrative around considering it a level service budget. And I get we haven't changed staffing at all, but we did add those two sports teams. So I don't know if it's genuine to keep calling it a level service budget, knowing we added things when we're promoting it. Like, and I get those were such small ass, but.
You know, it's a good.
We're adding services.
Yeah, I guess. So I hear what you're saying, but I'm just gonna repeat what I said when we talked about this before. I actually saw those as like a gap, a miss in our service that we should have been offering. I understand it's an increase, but I don't see it as adding what we thought our service level was.
Because our policy says.
Our policy had said that if there's interest and there are enough kids. And for some reason, those two teams weren't flagged until recently. So that's my like, well, I certainly kind of thought that's what the budget was providing for.
I wouldn't mention anything about level service or anything else. I would just highlight maybe the five points that had the biggest, you know, increases. Transportation, spit, she led, you know, you know, uh, yeah, three to five. And this is why our budget went up. You know, it's short, succinct, and people can understand it. You know, if, you know, you go into too much detail, you, you lose people. And for most people, those highlights are enough to get them to where you want them to go.
If you go into too much detail, you start doing calculations, right?
Some people see so, you know, so many things that they ignore it.
Right.
So, you know, it's short and sweet.
Um, yeah, and I was just gonna add that, if you look at the, I just pulled up how it's presented, how it's posted, like the adopted and then the certified. Certified doesn't have anything, but the adopted slides or even the slides before that where we were looking at options. The only one that was called level service was the one that, the version that didn't have anything like that. So I don't think there's anywhere where it's publicly posted as level service. I would just say we just kind of steer clear and focus on, this is what drove, the drivers of the increase were focused there, if it was. But you can kind of feel better knowing that. There's nowhere where it says.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no place where it says level service.
Yeah, I also agree with what Carolyn say that, said that it, this was a miss. It should have been there. Our policy says it should be there. And, and now that we've caught it, it's, it's, it's where, it is level to where it should have been all along.
But, you know.
But we don't need to argue that. That just gets complicated.
And for some people, okay, right? And for some people, level service, they have a bad reaction to. Because everybody says level service. So don't say anything at all, because it doesn't really matter. What matters is those big drivers. That's why the budget is going up what it is. And that translates to assessments that's, you know, some towns need to put on an overlock.
And we're not talking about overrides. No mention of override.
Yep. So speaking of that, like, can the Q and A or somewhere along the way, even though it's not about the override, but talk about the issue that Boxford is facing, that in addition to those, there's that one hundred and fifty increase in the, um.
Wired.
Thank you. Yeah. Cause that's just a, another info, right? Fact.
So a few years back, so you remember we, I, I was able to get that, that the guy who owns the black box at Desi, where these calculations come from, I was able to get a quote from him to explain exactly why, um, things happened in Topsfield. So.
Is that the guy that you?
I think it was, it must've.
Like Joe or something?
Sold in there. Yeah, so we.
You're gonna find that quote?
Well, I'm not sure it applies equally to, to Middleton. I'll find it and, you know, we could, we can maybe reach out to him again. It's Boxford, excuse me.
No, I pointed because you, you had the call with Dusty with you, were you there?
I didn't, I was there.
Yeah, you know, for.
With Costa.
You know, it's really the fact that more of Boxford students in all three districts are in Masco in, you know, to the students of the, the two towns.
I know.
So that, that, so.
I just said the state formula just allocated us another hundred and fifty K and we have no control over it.
I mean, what he, what he gave me last time was, was understandable. It wasn't, you know, overly complicated.
But Costa, that is very helpful because you did show me all the sheets, but the ult, ultimately that is why. It's just, I, if I, if we end up talking about that at town meeting, we're, we're in cross everything. I don't want.
Why I miss the spending numbers?
So, you know, it, it's just basically where Boxford's, you know, residents go to school in relation to where Box, you know, the other two town residents go to.
Yeah, because the one fifty just shifted, but, right? It's a good guy for you guys.
And on this, you know, we do the budget and do the turf, because that's what we're talking about at town meeting.
And the turf is part of the budget.
Turf is part of the budget. Um. So, all right, so did you say that you had planned to be talking, to be writing a letter?
Yeah, I would do something probably last week in April, first week in May is when I would send it out, just so it's not, you know, you send it out now.
No, we don't wanna send it.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I mean, I've got, I've even got a paragraph that.
On May second.
About tomorrow.
Town meeting is May second.
Right.
Topsfield.
I know when we did this before, we wait for everyone to get back from April vacation.
Yeah.
So that is not before April vacation, but before your.
Right, so it's that last week.
Yes, last week of April is.
So, um, what is that?
And that's, and that's the budget?
I mean, that's, so in my, my update, I wasn't gonna read it for you guys because you all know what's in it. Um, but I was gonna, I have a bullet for the up, for my superintendent's update that's about the FY twenty-four budget. That I'm gonna send out tomorrow.
Oh.
That's just a paragraph.
Okay, yeah.
And we don't. Something longer for.
For the.
So is that, so Mike's email is different than the FAQs that we're gonna be putting together? Okay, so. I, I would appreciate the collaborative effort on this, that many hands make light work. If everybody kind of sends what they feel are the, the salient points, and so it's gonna be redundant. But wanna make sure that way we're getting everybody's opinions and we'll, we'll put them together and make them pretty. Does that sound good? Yes?
Yeah.
Um, I just also wanna make a note, because this kind of came up, Joe and Costa were here during the community relationship subcommittee meeting. But kind of looking at my Boxford peers in particular, you know, Carolyn's been a fierce advocate for Masco for many years. And as we know, she, she's not planning to run for reelection. So the relationships she's built with the town, especially like the boards that we rely on to show their support. Cause when they show their support, it helps the voters feel more confident in supporting our budgets. You know, goes such a long way. And that became really evident last week in Topsfield with the relationships we've built. And I think similarly, from what I've heard out of Middleton. So I'm just gonna say it to be really transparent, like I have some concerns about whether, but the Boxford, um, representation is, is, I shouldn't say concerns. I just think it's important that, um, people are paying attention to the things that Carolyn's gonna be passing the baton on. Um, because we, we need all three towns to support Masco.
Masco is really young and, and our, like Carolyn's been here and then the other three members are all a year and less.
Yeah. So like, I appreciate that people, it's such a hard thing to step up into these positions. And it's great when we have people doing it. I'm showing the chair because Patty was here before. But, um, I just wanna mention that because I think sometimes we don't necessarily have a chance to really communicate that part of the job as, as we get to this phase of the year. And so we can't like set an expectation if we haven't communicated that. And I think it, I just want, so two things, I am hopeful that everyone is in Boxford is like kind of hearing this and like stepping up to the plate as far as building relationships with your town boards. But also like reach out to us like individually offline if you're ever not sure how to handle something. Like, don't feel like you're swimming in the ocean alone, because it, you kind of need sometimes to bounce something off somebody, like, how did it go? If you have a question about how it went in, in Topsfield or Middleton, you can ask those of us that just already went through it with our finance committees, for example. And it might give you the confidence of what you need to say or do or how to go about it. So part of our job is to make sure we get their support, so.
And I think it's good to let people that weren't here at that meeting know, um, like, that, um, we talked, uh, Patty and Joe, um, that Patty's gonna be able to go to the FinCon meeting next week because Joe's gonna be away, very far away. Um, and, and Patty will have somebody from our committee, um, you know, I don't know, Carolyn, you're able to, but, um, Bill, Tasha, and possibly a turf up person also help because she's not, she hasn't been ingrained in the turf.
So that's, those meetings are specifically about turf, right?
Well, so she's gonna try and get on to the agenda.
I know, but I'm just, what you're talking about is a turf conversation, right?
That was, starting with the turf, but we also need to talk about budget too, so everything I, I would, whatever they want, but turf, yes, for sure. So, um, so that's what, so we were, we were discussing the turf on those meetings because we had just had them with Middleton and Topsfield. Um, but, you know, we've, you know, Bill was on the, the turf before I was. I've been on it for a while. Trevor stepped up, so it was fairly easy. You know, Lily's been peripherally involved for a while. So it was very easy for us to go and talk about these things without like a member of turf up, per se, um, for Boxford.
She's gonna need a member, uh, she's gonna need.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
You are somebody that's a good resource because you have those relationships, you don't have the turf information.
Fair.
Bill and I have turf information, we're not from the right town.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't, they would like to hear, their preference, their ears are more open for Boxford residents.
Correct. So that's, and since we're, we're lacking in, um, turf, Boxford, uh, there is a member of. Um, a Topsfield member said that maybe she can help. But again, we are where we are and we don't have a lot of, um, expertise, per se, right now in the Boxford area dealing with turf. So I've asked for support from turf up or from Masco School Committee Topsfield representatives on town meeting also, because we're, you know, have town meeting on the same night.
Right.
So I know Middleton talked about, you know, if a turf up person came and they weren't from Middleton, it would be fine to hear them too. And so I was assuming that the other towns would have that kind of, you know, they sit in a special spot with a little dunks hat on, that they can't vote, but they can still speak, um, to an article or whatever. So we will need Topsfield su- support just because they're the only ones available. So, you know, putting it out there, but for these meetings next week, we do need help.
Is there a Boxford resident who's participating in the turf up committee?
That's what one turf up from, person from Topsfield told me, but she, I haven't, we haven't met her in.
Newer.
She's newer, so.
I'm looking at the committee list.
Name, name.
Um, yeah, and there's, there's not a lot of Boxford people on it.
Correct. Are there any?
Two. Okay, and this one person is on the primary, but she's new to the primary team. And so when Topsfield primary was telling me that maybe she can help.
So I, I think that's all great. Thank you for that update. I do think there needs to be a Boxford School Committee person that is the leader of that group when we talk to the town. And I understand, Joe, that you're away, but who, if it's you or if it's now Patty because she's going, has to do it through the town meeting up until, even with the support behind her. But it really needs to be, it will, it will be more likely to pass, I believe, if a Boxford School Committee member is at least introducing the article or starts talking and then introduces the turf person from another town.
Yes.
So I, I'm not sure if it's Patty or Joe or.
Well, Patty said she would do it.
Cause she's.
I would try to remote into the meetings.
Okay.
One of them, you can be in Thailand for one of them and Singapore for the other, so.
No, I get that. I just think we got it. So maybe it is Patty, because I think we only have like a month, right? Like, so it's whoever's gonna try to get up to speed probably should just be one person, right?
And, and we, we have a, a plethora of documents right now that kind of are giving all the information that there is, so.
Did you give that to Patty?
She hasn't. And Joe has it.
The other towns know.
Did, I don't know if you sent it out to the full committee, how making the binder with the quick answers for town meeting floor.
I don't think so.
Making like a press briefing, binder tabs, it's like, oh, water usage or chemicals. We're already starting to get some of those questions or to see them coming, so, and I'll just submit, I'll give it.
Oh, that's fantastic. Yeah, that's awesome.
For town meeting floor, so we don't stand there and not have answers.
Yeah, and Trevor's offered to talk.
We offered.
Yes, well, so, so that exact kind of literature and then the, I don't know if who else has yet seen the slides that turf ups been working on. And then the slide, the slides that Bill made, like you mentioned that I was perfectly involved. But what I learned over the last week and a half is that I had to learn it all so I could prepare for our finance committee. Like, I just took some time and learned it all. So it wasn't like I had it all from those slides. And the points, like the, some of the points in Bill's slide really kind of brought it home. But one of the biggest takeaways for me with our finance committee in particular was from the first, because I was just listening in. I wasn't even there for this. I was supposedly just listening in and then. I was supposedly just listening in, and then, and this is kind of why I was listening in, then they got to Masco and I was like, whoa, wait a minute. They didn't really even see it as a Masco sponsored article. This is our article on the warrant, we are the sponsors of it on the warrant. They were like, well, turf up hasn't come to talk to us, and I was like, well, it's our article, you can ask me, I'm here, it's our thing. Turf up is our fiscal sponsor, like they're helping finance this, but it's our article. So that right alone, like I think we all, all of us just need to make sure we're up to speed. And between your binder and your slides and the turf up slides, like we should be ready to answer those questions, anyway.
Everywhere, yeah, everybody, so, I don't know if, like, because I feel like things were getting sent out, Bill graciously sent out, uh, town specific versions of what.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Because Topsfield comes out first, that's why we were like scrambling.
Those are good slide maker.
And then, and, and at the same time, turf up was, we were working on it over this weekend, doing like revisions to what they presented to us. Just to make it a little bit less school commit, committee specific, but the, the biggest use of that now is really, um, info.
At least in Middleton, you know, part of it is kind of reading the room and sometimes. Saying less than you are prepared to say.
Yes.
Is the best way to go.
I think he's saying I.
Well, no, sometimes, you know, when you start talking about it, you know, especially if. If there's momentum going in the town meeting, that, yeah, it's passing article after.
Oh, yeah, we.
Just get out of the way, don't say it.
Well, that happens a lot for Masco.
Agreed, okay, so I think that we're all feeling good, everybody's gonna send me what they feel like the most salient points are, I think we have the turf, yes?
Um, I know we've gone over this point like a million times, but I just want like one.
In one.
Going into town meetings. Our capital is included in our budget, and if any part of it fails, it is considered failed for that town.
The whole thing.
Including turf.
Correct.
Just abundantly clear.
Middleton, two, two questions, or?
Uh, the, the, uh, operating assessment is within the omnibus. You know, that, you know, this year will require a two thirds vote because we are using a hundred and thirty two thousand from the Spit Stabilization Fund, so the entire budget needs two thirds. And the, you know, the turf is a separate question.
And I think too, when we're, like, we've brought it up to me and Tasha now, talked about it at the Selecting Meeting and the FinCon Meeting. And I think people forget that it's also negatively impacting us, like we're not getting much of a benefit because if. Say, any one article in those two towns, it's a risk for us too, it's not like we're just getting all the reward, so. I think it's when we're framing it to also keep in mind that we're the happiest campers about it either, good.
silly and Bill flipped a vote on Tuesday, Monday night. For the first time, like you said.
Yes, you did.
I don't know if, if we've flipped any vote, but I know that they felt more comfortable after it than they did before, and, um, I was happy to hear that, so. Um, and maybe I talked too. Nobody told me to get up there and public speak. Okay, everybody knows what their task is for this, we're gonna move along, because. Move along, because, actually, we're pretty, we're not bad, we're only ten minutes off, so, Mike?
Yep, all right, so first off, uh, we want to congratulate, uh, Brian Ferreira, our theater advisor, and the cast and crew of Women in Wallace. Uh, they were selected to complete, compete in the finals of the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild High School Theater Festival. Uh, Maskinum will perform at twelve thirty on Saturday, April first, uh, at the Back Bay Event Center in Boston, and I have a link in my blog to, uh. My tickets, and we want to say break a leg. As in the sign of spring is like the peepers, uh, MCAS is here. So, uh, tenth grade students began MCAS testing this week, uh, English Language Arts tests were administered on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. Uh, students who were absent on these dates will be scheduled for makeup tests. Uh, grade ten students will be taking the mathematics section of the MCAS on May sixteenth, seventeenth. Uh, ninth grade students will take the science, technology, engineering MCAS on June sixth and seventh. Uh, in the middle school, they will begin MCAS testing with the English Language Arts tests, uh, in grade seven. On April fourth and April fifth, uh, the middle school will be conducting MCAS testing for two days per week. Uh, from the beginning of April, basically through the third week of May. Yeah, a lot of MCAS going on, um, Dr. McManus has actually posted the entire, uh, MCAS schedule on his blog. And. And then also, uh, wanted to note that, uh, the state of Massachusetts has, uh, the Department of Mental Health has recently launched. The Massachusetts Behavioral Health Helpline, or BHHL. Uh, the BHHL connects individuals and families to the full range of treatment services for mental health and substance use. Uh, offered in Massachusetts, which includes outpatient, urgent, and immediate crisis care. Uh, the BHHL is staffed by trained clinicians and certified peer specialists to support every caller's needs. Uh, the BHHL is available twenty four hours a day, three hundred and sixty five days a year by phone. Uh, by phone and text at eight three three seven seven three two four four five. And online, uh, for chat at masshelpline.com, um, and that's what, uh, Representative, Representative Kearns was talking about earlier today. Department of Mental Health is actually, is basically taking the guesswork out of. You know, just trying to self diagnose yourself before you can actually make a call, figure out who to call, so they put everything into one line, um, so you call this number. And they will direct you to the right, uh, clinicians, uh, available through the state, so. Awesome, pretty big left, resourceful.
Love that, that's in your thing going out too.
Yeah, and it's, uh, Julia Lobell's been meeting with our local rep for the behavioral helpline, and she has dropped off a ton of literature. Yeah, I got more today, actually, from, about this that we're gonna have. Posted around the buildings and in our nurses' offices and guidance offices, uh, for people to pick up.
I love that there's also a text.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a chat.
And a chat.
And a chat, that's great.
Right. Yeah, tonight.
Thank you. Policy, ooh, the exciting part of the meeting. Finally, I've been waiting, why, why don't we hit the band?
All right, so the first, um, if everybody has it up, I don't know if Mike's gonna bring it up. Um, the first section are, there were, um, I think four sections in the B. Section that we had pulled last time for discussion by the full committee. So we went, we had our meeting last week, we went through it, um, and as presented is what. The, the policy subcommittee has decided to present. Um, for BA, BA, it's school committee operational goals, we made certain changes, um, just to reflect. The discussions of the community and quest, uh, discussions of the, the policy subcommittee and concerns by other members as to the language. Um, and this section just describes our operational goals. And a particular concern with the last paragraph, um, which basically describes how. What, what committee members should think about before they vote, so that's BA. I'm gonna go through them all, and then if there's questions, comments, we can take them afterwards. Um, BBA is our authority, this is based on, um, state law and, um. I think some regulations, and then basically we took this section and merged the two, the Maskinum and Original version with the mask form. Um, to add certain language, which was, um, in blue. Uh, just to make them. And then BBBA slash BBBB, um, describes. Committee members qualifications and oath of office, some of it is, um, based on state law, and we took. Even, we took the mask version, combined it with our. Our policy, which is, I believe, BBBA, and we combined it with the mask version of BBBB. And deleted any information about, um. The last two paragraphs, or the last two sentences. And finally, school, I'm sorry, there's five sections, not four, BCA, um, a school committee member ethics. Just basically, um, what we need to follow as our ethic code as we serve as school committee members. We believe kept the Maskinum version without any changes. And did not adopt the mask version because they were essentially the same. And then BEDB was about agenda preparation and dissemination for school committee meetings. And we made slight share, changes, um, about, uh, in the, in the first paragraph. Um, but we combined the, we essentially kept our. Our policy and did not adopt the mask version, so. With that.
Questions?
Comments on three of them. On the first one, you know, the, where it talks about members should consider these thing, you know, things in, you know. I don't think a committee has the authority to tell its members what they should consider and what they don't consider.
Where are you?
Where's this?
Just.
Yeah, the first one.
The second, the last paragraph.
Oh, I got it, I got it, thank you.
Yeah, the last paragraph.
Okay.
Where it's all crossed off in there.
So, yeah, it's, yeah, can see it, get all the way back. That, you know, the committee and each of its members should consider the future and the needs of all people, meaning. You know, what each member considers and thinks about, you know, is. Kind of their responsibility, and I don't think the committee should tell people, you gotta consider this, you gotta consider that.
I would disagree. I think that, um, certainly this isn't prescribing a checklist that a committee member needs to go through in making a decision. Um, it's basically painting a rather broad gu- guiding principle. Which I think is perfectly fine in stating, and nothing there prevents someone from having a thousand other criteria that they apply in making a decision, so.
I would agree with what Bill said.
And the, and the, so Dorothy Presser, who we, um, who is helping us with the review, has mentioned or has. Said several times that our policy should be aspirational, and they're the why of schools and not the how, so. I see it as the, like, basically, why are we doing this? That was my, like, we're doing this for the future and the needs of all people, um, and then long range planning in addition to it, so that's.
My second comment is on the next policy, you know, number six, to vote.
CBA, section six.
Yeah.
To vote and act in the school committee meetings for the good of a district and its students. If we each vote based on that, and the. You vote is not unanimous, what is good for the district is the majority and what it, you know, and therefore. Anyone in the minority has not acted in, for the good of the district. I second Costa's opinion on that.
I think it's suggesting it's subjective.
The majority defines the good of the district, so, you know, if anytime I vote in the minority. By definition, I'm acting not in the best interest of the district.
I disagree with that completely. That's not what it means at all.
It's, but we all may have different ideas about what the good of the dis- what is good for the districts.
But the majority then defines what is the good of the district.
Not necessarily.
That's some mental gymnastics that I don't understand, I mean, it's. Everyone is, if you were, if you were at this table and you were not doing it for the benefit of all, for the good of the students, then you don't need, then you shouldn't be at this table. Now, just because the majority voted differently from you, that doesn't mean that that wasn't how you were. Or the calculation that you're using to, to make your decision, it, it does not instantly label you as someone who hates the district. I mean, that changes with every single vote, this, this doesn't make sense.
I think this language, isn't it consistent with the MASC, um, policy manual? I agree with Bill.
And my third comment is on the agenda. I think you need to have some mechanism where a.
Which one is that, sorry?
BEDB, the last one.
The last, where a member's request for an agenda item is granted at some point. It took me seven years of asking to talk about the district agreement and the apportionment formula. Before, you know, this was multiple years, multiple chairs, before it was even placed on the agenda for discussion. That's not right.
I agree with that, Costa. Hallelujah.
So are you saying like if you ask? It's fine, you get in. How do you put that? Oh, yeah, I guess that is, like, you're a busy avenue if you can't get there through the, through this.
Yeah, I mean, and at times I was told, yeah, it's gonna be on there, and then it was.
Heard them say that too.
I brought back the B sections just for everybody, in case, so. Uh, what is your suggestion that?
I, I, I don't have.
Okay.
A, a suggestion, I, I'm saying that, you know, you know, it's, there's gotta be. You know, a way that a, a topic that a member wants to talk about. Gets talked about, you know, whether, you know, it's. You know. I am, and the timing, you know, you know, is, you know, something different, but, you know, to go for seven years of asking.
Yeah, it shouldn't take that long.
So I know that you brought, so I'm thinking like, okay, so that stuff usually comes up in the planning process, like that annual planning meeting, and I know you brought it up then, too. And then we go through, because there could be eleven different ideas times an infinite number, like we could all have a million things we want done. So through the planning process, we prioritize and set goals, and that was never prioritized, I know that's what happened, essentially, right?
No, we, people didn't even want to discuss it.
We'll see that, okay.
Until they did.
I, you know, at, you know, at one year, I asked, or can we, at a meeting, can we put this issue on the agenda? After, you know, the budget is approved, yeah, we'll do that. Never happened.
It's a kinda, I don't know how you get around that, basically it's up to the chair, because that's kind of the role of the chair of a committee.
Is, is.
Superintendent and the chair.
I think we've asked you to be chair before.
Hmm? Not my meeting.
That's what this says though, doesn't it?
Yeah, it says, it says the chair with consultation.
With consultation from the superintendent.
So is there, so, to, to go for chair. To the point of there being eleven different people who might want eleven different things put on there. Like, it's almost like we need this little opportunity in our meeting, which I feel like we used to have, like, anything else? I know we can't, but, but just like, but in that, it could be topics for another meeting that people want to see, and we could kind of get the will of the committee, whether or not.
I'd be able to do that.
How?
Well, what, I think what you just described, we have a standing agenda item that maybe it's called items for future discussion, and people throw them out and. There's some sense of the committee that, that, yeah, we, we need to squeeze that in, now. I don't know whether we want, if one member wants to have discussion and nobody else wants to talk about it. I don't know that that's, that one actually should get on, but if there's, but if there is some sufficient. Energy around that topic among the committee, I, I don't know that it needs.
I don't think there was in this case, and there should have been, but I don't think there was.
I mean, there was eventually. I mean, there was eventually, in the early years, you know, back in the golden days.
So is that idea then, like, you know, future, future topics? And if somebody has something?
You know, you know, we have done that, you know, in different portions, if a member asks, oh, I want more in, information about this. You know, Bill, during this budget season saying, yeah, I'd like to see some, you know, scenarios that reduce it, that was done. You know, Carolyn asked, you know, about getting more information on how the circuit breaker works, that was done. So, you know, it's, you know, your members ask for certain things to be put in a future agenda, and it's done. I'm saying that all members should be treated fairly in that respect.
But let me clarify. When I asked for the scenarios and stuff, I had actually brought that up.
During a budget meeting?
Well, meetings earlier. And, and, but let me finish. And I sent Jeff an email and said, hey, when are we going to talk about this? Because, you know, I've been looking for this for the last several meetings. And basically, the answer I got was until he heard from really the sense of the committee that they wanted to see that, that it wasn't going to happen just because I asked. And that was, you know, we can debate whether that's the right approach. But eventually, we did get there. And that, that, you know, everyone wanted to see the various scenarios. I might have brought it up, but there seemed to be, you know, enough, enough other folks that wanted to see that as well.
I was just gonna say, like, at the planning meeting, we talked about the length of time our meetings take, and I think we have to address that before we open it up.
Add.
Free for all for eleven ideas.
That's what I was.
And that's, yeah, I mean, that's part of it.
Right.
Here is. Come up with something that, you know, maybe spend in the next.
Right. But in reality, that isn't, I mean, I don't think that's actually been happening. It's not like at every meeting, you know.
I would, I would agree with that, but, but it could.
And then, then we change.
Right. Then. The annual planning process.
But, you mean, it might not come up then?
Well, he has brought, like, if we're gonna use this as an example, and it just never was prioritized, and I understand that in the end, it was great and we should have done it earlier, but we didn't realize that. And I don't know how you prevent that from happening because.
Right.
I mean, you're planning annually. I, I don't know if you're asking for something more often than that, like, do we recount every three months? Does anyone want to talk about anything else? We can barely fit in what we wanna, our goals.
Zoe, did you have a?
Well, I was, I was gonna ask, I was gonna mention that the mechanism right now is to, offline, you ask for something, right? For, this is like a weekly agenda. And I wondered if, so this sounds a little bit more like a protocol of interaction of our committee members with each other. So I wondered if that, if it came up in any other of the policies that we need, that you guys can think of, or if we should look at our protocols and see if there's someplace in there that somehow assures a member who maybe continuously brings up a good idea, does deny the opportunity to deliberate on it. You know, there's an avenue to address it.
I mean, the nice thing about, if, if it were, if we had this little, like, other ideas section, is that it's almost like the other asks in the superintendent's budget that, you know, you have like this history of the director of curriculum has been asked for the past four years, like, this is the year, look, we've been asking for this for four years. So it's, like, you kind of have a case to bring it up, but we, we definitely want to make sure that we don't want just like special things, like, let's just discuss this without having a whip.
Or if it's not our. It's not in our purview. I mean, not obviously was, and but if it's not in our, if there's nothing we can do about it.
Right. Trevor?
In our planning meeting, because me and Costa, Costa, the way she pronounces it. Me and Costa both brought up different areas of the regional agreement, and I think that made it to, did it not make it to the final list? I know we had to review the.
I thought it did. We got there, though, didn't we?
I think it was close.
And there's two more meetings.
Yeah, the policy manual kind of just took all of our time.
Right, right.
Well, and it's not done yet, right?
Not very close.
I mean, we knew that that was gonna be a multi-year ask, which started last year.
No, two years ago.
This is year three in it? Oh, wow, how quickly time goes. So I don't think we have a solution other than, I, I mean, is it like once a quarter that we have that on the, maybe not limited to every meeting, but once a quarter, so like four check-ins through the year or three check-ins in our annual meet?
Are you imagining sort of like where we have subcommittee updates, the U.S. updates having like a request for future agenda items, and someone can just name it, but not spending time on it? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I, yeah, like, if you name that you want to talk about blah, 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 then I'm gonna see, like, I'm gonna look around, it's me, and I'm gonna say, like, does people want to talk about blah, blah, blah? And then if people are like, no. But you wouldn't talk about it that night.
So you can't make it, can't discuss it.
But you would have to explain what blah.
Yeah, you would.
So we can make. We'll assume we know what.
I, I'm not, yeah, I'm not, I, I understand that that would be nice, but I just don't know how practical that will be, because your meetings are gonna, and I'm saying your, your meetings are going to get. And I mean, we should take a look at our goals for this year and see how far we've made it through. Because I don't think we've made them through them all, and now we're talking about.
Blah, blah, blah.
And then people may all of a sudden say, you know what, that is really important. And boom, you're off like a squirrel off of, you know, something else. So I, I, I get it. It sounds very democratic, but I just don't understand how practical it is, unless you want to add more meetings to your schedule.
I sure do.
Future.
I'm out of here.
Problem is someone not able to get an item on the agenda that they request. And they have a good idea, you would think they could convince a couple of other committee members to join them in the request. So could you make the language that, you know, the agendas, any item suggested by a minimum of three committee members automatically goes on the agenda, something like that? Could you do something like that, so that there's a way for, you know?
Three doesn't hit, three's really easy.
Just don't say six, because that's an open medium.
It's not a bad idea.
Where, where does that go?
Any of them five, if it's gonna go that route, I would make.
Well, you see, the, the request must be in writing, and then you get right after that, you can say, any request made by, you know, three members or more automatically makes, whatever the number is, I don't know what the number is, but, you know, automatically will be approved. So we don't have to be at the mercy of the chairperson.
And the plan, and the goals, it's not just the chair, it's the goals that were set by the full committee. Don't forget, were you there for that meeting this year?
The retreat?
I'm just trying to remember, did you go to the retreat where we set the goals? I just can't remember. You remember? Okay.
I think we had everybody.
So it's not just the, the chair is getting us.
Something on the agenda, it wasn't about goals, right?
Well, I see something like that, though, like, it is, it all leads back to the goals.
Well, if it matches the goals.
If it matches the goals, if it's something else.
I don't know, but sometimes stuff comes up in the year.
Well, then we always add that stuff, though, we do. Like, if there's emergency stuff, like a pandemic.
Oh, yeah, I, I'll, I'll give you another example, you know, yeah. Six, seven years ago, during, it was getting into budget time, and I had suggested that, you know, we needed to look at staffing levels. Oh, no, 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 no. And so the budget vote comes, and the vote was seven to four, no budget. Because an issue that affected the budget, no, you know, didn't want to be talked about.
In between this, so anyone wanting to submit an agenda can do so.
Nobody can.
But then there's no, there's no language around how it, proving it, other than at the discretion of the chair and consultation with the superintendent, will it be included? So I think it's like, we need something in between.
I, I, I like the, like, five people get on board. We've seen that, that. We're all talking about the chair. I haven't been turning down.
Well, you can say something.
Not, not.
Say something like, any, you know, any decision by the chairperson not to include a committee item can be overridden by, by a combination of five members of the board or something like that. And you're never gonna go down that path if you're always allowing things to be on, on the agenda anyway, it's not a problem. But if you ever got into a situation where there was just butting heads, right, and the one of them had a really good idea, but they were never gonna get it on the agenda because the chair didn't like that person for some reason, right? You could overcome that by the rest of the committee deciding, hey, wait a minute, this is important enough, it needs to be on the agenda. Right? And the question is just how many people again? Well, that's the best idea to get, but with like the personal grudge with the chair, seven years is a long time.
And there were different chairs.
So that's what I'm saying. It's like not that there was a person, I, like, there definitely, if there's one, one year, sure, but like seven constant years, I find it hard to believe. So I, I, I'm leaning with Carolyn. That our goals kind of set us up for the year, and if you want to work your magic during the goal meeting, work your magic then, but.
Okay, so.
I think we just didn't want to do the work. I mean, I never, I was never chair.
I, I remember.
And that was a big undertaking, and I don't think they wanted to do the work.
I remember from previous administration, it was, once you open up, it was like a Pandora's box, that's.
And it wasn't that bad, that's exactly what they told us.
Right? That's, that's what stuck in my, stuck in my head, was like, oh crap, we do not want to open that thing up. So.
And now we open it up annually.
So I, I don't know, do we want to say, like, we have the annual meetings and we have Joe's language, and then we take this one off, vote on the other ones, bring back and, and decide what people, like, right now, just decide which way to go, because we do want to keep going.
I think that's procedural, so I, I would just vote to keep it as this.
Okay, so that's a third vote. So now we have three things, team.
Well, I mean, is that, are there any other examples that were that, like that? Because if that's the only example, this is a policy. If, if that's the only time that that's come up, I don't really think that's enough of a reason to change a policy. I would maybe look at our protocols, or maybe revisit the, like, within our protocols, we could say something about checking in on our goals more frequently than we do, which one of our goals, by the way, was to review our progress toward our goals midterm. So that way, if something did make it, it's not, because Trevor's right, like, there's a couple of things on here that we, you know, have skimmed the surface on, but.
I do, so I remember I got shut down once for school start time, way before we even started to address it. I didn't even get a response from the chair, and I was kind of relatively new, and I was like, oh, okay. But I, it eventually, obviously, became a bigger issue, and it wasn't just me, but it, I, I get it, it's kind of a, it was a really good cause, it's a crappy feeling when you get shut down, but I was like, oh, they're the chair, there's always next year. I kind of think you gotta stick with that.
Okay, so I don't want to shut, to shut Costa down again for like the eighth time.
I didn't have a solution, I just.
You know, I just, I want to give you a win.
We've considered it.
Of five people, I can tell you that. It wasn't.
It wasn't, okay.
You want a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to pass all the B policies as presented.
I second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'll oppose.
Any abstention? No, okay. That's a first read.
That was first, we will bring it back cleaned up for the next one.
Okay.
Okay. So let's go back to goals. So one of the goals was to have a sustainability policy at Masco to sort of mess with what we anticipated would be a capital plan. We were provided with a a draft policy, and we went through it with on Friday, and we were again reminded that policy should be the why and not the how, so we agreed to present it without the hows, or most of the hows, which it was a little bit more detailed when we had first started looking through it. So this is, as presented, our first pass of sustainability at Masco, and thank you, Mike, for fixing the.
He just noticed that.
My typo in the name of maskinomic, usually have to do the cheer for my cheering days. Apparently, I didn't do that. So anyway, that was a really long time ago. I still use it. So this is it, as presented. I was presented with some requested changes earlier today, and the suggestions were two, and I can bring it up.
There's a lot on this. You, you just emailed it.
I did, I emailed it in case.
Just me, or?
I sent it to Mike, too, in case he was gonna present it, so it was a correction of the name, the spelling error, and then where it says, consider the suggestion or the request was to change it to simply state the action. So in the first one, instead of saying, consider, it would be just to do reduce the district's carbon footprints. And then in several places, starting with section B, is to enact in accordance with all present and future federal, state, and local laws, ordinances, regulations, standards, rules, governmental requirements and policies, administrative rulings, court judgments, and decrees, and all amendments thereto relating to pollution or protection of human health, wildlife, natural resources, or the environment, defined as environmental laws. So that after number two, we say, act in accordance with environmental laws. After number three, we say,
Oh, okay.
in accordance with environmental laws, and the same for four and five. And then a number two, instead of consider, add an encourage engagement in. So it would say, consider and encourage engagement in activities in numbers two and three and four.
Who's this from?
Yeah, that's it.
No, who is this from?
They came from a member. Zoe. Who drafted, actually, the original one that we.
Right.
That we had worked with, so.
I have a question.
I was expecting to get cut down.
Why is water usage on here? And, and the reason I'm saying that is I, I know that, I don't know, why we are bringing off, off a well or something, I mean, where, where do we get our water from?
Touch fire.
Depends. The, like, building water service is from the town of Topsfield. And then the outdoor watering, we have our own well.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that is because I, I think about environmental things as things that are unfixable if you sort of violate it, right? So pollution is something you don't want to, you, you want to avoid, obviously. You want to be a good steward of the environment. But if you conserve water, what are you doing? Like, if there's ample water available because we have a really rainy year, does it really matter whether you're conserving water or not? You can't take it and put it in a tanker truck and drive it to the Sahara, for instance. So the water part of this, to me, is always been.
But we can run out.
Because we live in the Northeast, we don't live in coastal California, you know, we don't, we don't live in a desert environment.
But yeah, if in a drought.
It's one of nine endangered rivers in this country.
One of the top one?
Ipswich River is one of nine endangered rivers in this country, and it is the watershed that there are a few towns, Topsfield, Ipswich are two of them, that don't have a reserve or a reservoir, and they only drop from the watershed of the river. So anytime any water is withdrawn, it impacts the water table and creates significant droughts. And we've been in within, we've been in with, within days of not having enough water for the town of Topsfield. Yeah, so that would be why in this case.
But I, I understand in cases of drought, I get that, right? But just as a pure policy, I, I don't, that's my question.
Quite consider, I think.
I could add, maybe you could suggest adding. Could add, maybe you could suggest adding in cases in, you know, in periods of.
In periods of ever water shortage or whatever. Because someone could argue, well, let's let's just drive our water usage to zero. Do you really want to do that? Right?
Why would?
I don't think that.
Now, like we can do.
That's a little tangential. I don't.
Yeah, I think that's extreme because it's.
Have you been on on any uh, continuous improvement teams in your life? I mean, there's all.
Well, that's you gotta know. It's not a very good one if that's if that's what they're doing.
I mean, we're talking about sustainability. And that includes water sources.
And it's reducing. It's not, it's not.
I keep getting rid of.
The 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 real problem with the Ipswich watershed is the amount of water taken out of the watershed by the communities that have sewer and send their water they take from the watershed to the ocean.
Okay, I think we gotta back to the policy.
So that's a comment. Is there any requests? So those were so those were the requested changes. We can discuss those. I just I.
Right.
Put them in there as a consideration so that if someone.
Well, and this is. Email them to us because I could send that over there.
Yeah, so this is a first read. So I would say if anybody has any comments like with anything else that we do, um, send them to Melissa and they will be incorporated for discussion on our second read. Right? I I I think this looks good. I think it's really hard to make something general and specific at this.
Are you talking about with the with the edits?
Yeah, I have a problem.
Just so we can kind of reflect the conversation we had in the policy subcommittee. We basically not everywhere, but most everywhere where it says considered, it said encouraged. And like that conversation we were having before, we didn't feel our policy should be dictating the mindset of members on whether they should be encouraging something or not. And so consider we found to be a happy medium where we have all options on the table and encourage is just a very pointed, strong word. Um, and I don't want to be in violations of our policy, but like you would be if you were not encouraging say, any of these things, like for instance, originally there was meatless Mondays to reduce the carbon footprint at Masco. And so say I was against that, that would be discouraging and against our policies, so.
That was in the policy, which they have meatless Mondays?
Yeah.
There were examples. They were like.
I knew those were going to get cut. I I mean, I kind of put those in there as like an example of the kinds of activities.
They were helpful for the discussion, you know?
Yes, they were.
I I definitely did not expect to see those.
I I also think of um, I know we did talk about consider versus encourage and I had to look up the definitions and I just did again. But now I'm thinking of um, the point Melissa made that from Dorothy about how we're supposed to where policies are aspirational. Um, and I my hope with a sustainability policy was that it would be aspirational. So I did like the word encourage. But I understand that consider is fairly effective on it. Um, but there were a couple tweaks you made. Were you
And I just.
Encourage back like with the activities. I kind of like that. Consider and encourage activities.
I I I just sent it to everybody. So if you are able to open your email.
Not saying put them all back, but I.
I can't hear changes, so I have to see them, so.
I'll just say I'm not a fan of number one, to just reduce the district's carbon footprint.
What was it before?
It's.
And it's considered. Consider reducing, I think it was.
Consider the reduction of the school district carbon footprint through. Was it before?
Sorry, say that again, Trevor?
It's just the original.
Consider the reduction of the school district carbon footprint through.
Okay.
That's what the original said.
No, I'm just looking at the change, so and and it doesn't have consider in the change, like that word was removed, so I didn't. That's why I didn't get it.
Yeah.
But if I went back to that.
Not like that.
I also have to see it.
Reduce. So what happens if we don't reduce our carbon footprint? Or in violation of our policy?
Well, this says through, so reduce it through the following ways, right? Reduce the district's carb footprint through and then A is regularly assessing energy efficiency.
Yeah.
B, consider options for all new construction, blah, blah, blah.
C.
Explore and D, consider. I think it's still. But dear boy, if none of those things succeed, if none of those things are enough, then we're noncompliant with the policy.
No, no.
Consider and not do it.
Yeah.
It's.
And you can.
Not all of it. Consider.
Maybe it then should be work to reduce.
I like the original wording. And I thought we had a good agreement coming out of that, out of the subcommittee meeting.
Or please consider with personal support or encouraging.
How about if um, if we can, after number one, we keep it as it was, which is consider the reduction of, but then all the other areas are consider and encourage as presented in the thing.
Two and three. Does anybody else feel like it sounds like you guys really talked about this word a lot, but that to consider the reduction of a carbon footprint is like, oh, let's think about that. Okay. Don't feel like doing it, so bye bye. Like to me, that has no teeth. It's like, so part of this is, you know, anytime when our administration is working on projects, there's some incentive to make sure you're working to. I kind of like, I didn't think of that link that was like to reduce the carbon footprint as opposed to just think about it.
That's I I do like the consider and encourage ones that were put in there. Um.
What about pursue the reduction? So we're working towards it, but we're not noncompliant if it.
If you don't achieve.
You know, work right away. And then how are these things going to be measured?
It's a. Okay, that's a whole other thing.
It's a guide, especially.
A bubble.
The same way our goals are are evaluated. Um, okay.
So we have pursue on the table, pursue the reduction.
Environmental Club is going to come tonight. I don't know why they ended up not coming, but they were asked questions about that recently around the tree punish and discussions around like the tree punish helps um, offset paper usage at Masco. And there were a lot of questions that they've actually been researching around how to measure how the tree punish counters usage and measuring paper use. So but I I think uh, there's other ways to maybe find some supports within the community and initiatives that could help. Because none of this really has much teeth, to Zilly's point. And and pursue or consider and encourage to the extent possible is, you know, watering it down a lot. And uh, so to reduce does feel like a very difficult policy to adhere to. Um, so we would be noncompliant if none of if A through D don't don't actually have any impact. So maybe it's pursue the reduction of the district's carbon footprint through blah, blah, blah. And then.
Find about more. Okay. Pursue.
Go for it. Pursue the reduction.
So are we going to be asking the administration if they're regularly regularly assessing the energy efficiency improvements in all school buildings?
Well, I do. We certainly will with capital plan. I mean, otherwise, I I would think it's new stuff comes up and it's available and it's not cost prohibitive to change out things. Then then, yeah. But I mean, no, not going to change.
Was already do that, actually, like my in my experience with the elementaries, I hadn't really gotten into it here, but they seem to kind of routinely.
Oops, the budget.
Raid, like the LED, the type of as things evolve, the type of bulb you use, the light sensors. It's a lot of that probably just already happens.
I just feel like I was elected here to be, to consider things, not to be encouraged or not to pursue. I was elected here to consider.
So so if we pursue the reduction and then we consider the options, I mean, it's not mandating us. So I I think it may.
I'm just one vote.
Yeah, it may, it may. So I think it it may help your feeling of only wanting to, not not only wanting to, but only being required to consider and not mandating. So we're not in violation of policy. So if we pursue the reduction through those steps, those are not mandated. They're just considerations and explorations.
Right? That that's right. That that first line is stronger language than the next four letters underneath it.
So that might work.
So I think if you, whatever you have in, I guess, the first, the number one, um, because you have those very prescriptive items beneath it, it there has to be a statement that says things like, or for example, as opposed to saying that you have to do all four of these things.
Oh, so pursue the reduction of the district's carbon footprint through areas such as.
Right, right.
Regular.
She I don't think you can have the detail there.
Okay, okay. Um.
And I personally, I I'm okay with pursue. I actually prefer consider because I think that to Trevor's point, we're that's uh, at least in this area, I think that um, I know how we're going to use this as we as we look at the capital plan and 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 I was, I'm guessing all of the of the strategic plan and budgets from now on, we're these are going to be, this is another lens that we're going to apply to it because of this policy and that was not here before. And I think that's that's a win. I don't think it needs to be any stronger than that.
Um.
That's her hand.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. But one thought I'm just thinking of now, I kind of glanced, there was also attached, I'm sorry that it's not really organized, but the reference page that has uh, different laws and guidelines and so forth. And you know, I think we're also elected to, we just reviewed a policy that thought about the future and all of the uh, what's good for the district and the direction that Massachusetts is going with uh, their emissions targets. Um, and uh, you know, clean energy future, greenhouse gas emission goals. There's definitely reason to believe, like there's a comment about the most recent version of the legislation that says it targets large school buildings and schools. The law requires that buildings over 20,000 square feet report their emissions annually. The state must also explore ways to make K to 12 school buildings all electric, more energy efficient and improve indoor air quality. So those are the kinds of things where that the laws will end up trickling down to us. And so if we're already pursuing those things, we'll be on a better position when, if or when those things aren't measured from.
Yeah, and that's been added in, right? By you in the end act accordingly in accordance with all of the present and future laws.
Yeah.
So on and so.
Right.
So I don't know. I think at this point, um, you've taken a couple notes.
Yep. I'll wrap it up to another red line or do a clean policy, present it and we will re- review it again and.
And and do that.
Yeah.
So.
Mike, do we have to take a?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna, you have to vote it twice, so.
So if we present it for the next one.
If you present it, yeah, we can do it the next.
All right.
So we shouldn't vote.
You don't need to.
Um, just a thought. Will that be, that'll be before town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Because that could be a answer to a question about turfing in the environment.
Well, I know I've already um, used it with some people's concerns, saying like, and we're like people who have concerns about the uh, sustainability and all that. I'm like, we're actually working on a policy for that right now, so.
Considering it.
We're encouraging it.
We're dancing around it.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're not going to do any vote right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, we don't need to.
Just a look.
I know it's getting late, but I just have one other question. In accordance with all present and future laws, can it just be in accordance with laws, like federal laws?
Because we can't, we can't, we can't accord to to laws that haven't.
That we're anticipating.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree with that one. That's a good comment.
One, so I'll just mention, Melissa was kind enough to kind of figure out how to phrase that. But I had had anticipated in there for that particular one, partly because if we're working on a big capital project, by the time it's actually getting built, if we see the trajectory of where things are going, I don't want to design something that in two years we can't install because things, the writing was on the wall and we know that that's not going to be.
Hmm.
That's sort of where I had that first, particularly for that one, the construction and renovation.
That is a good point.
And I actually use that terminology when I talk about environmental laws and agreements. So.
You do?
I do.
The word ant is something.
Yeah, we it it always has L present and future.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, it has to be liability, but that's where I.
So I think her Chris's point was good, but hearing why makes sense, makes a lot of sense.
And you're just considering them in that one, so.
One more quick question. I know number four. Both external and internal, does that apply to activities or does that apply to uh, reducing environmental pollution and contamination? What does that cause?
When I I read that, I'm thinking about like, oh, turf.
Oh, like in the building and out of the building.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and under, so originally I also had the examples that were taken out, which is which I get and then they shouldn't be there. But one example is like, there's a law against idling. You're not allowed to idle for more than five minutes. We have people sitting there idling, you know? So a lot of places have a sign where the pickup line is that say.
Don't idle.
So just a reminder. That was but internal and internal, I'm I'm not sure. I might have pulled that, I borrowed heavily from other examples. It's indoors and outdoors, so it's like basically the the whole, the it's the whole campus.
Indoors and outdoors works for me.
Okay.
External and internal, I don't know if that means external to Masco.
I agree.
Oh, good point.
Good point.
We're talking your house.
Okay.
You don't live that far.
I don't know.
Doors it is. If everyone agrees.
Yep.
Right? That makes sense to me. It may also made sense to me the other way. I can be fairly easily swayed.
Okay, I think I think we had a good discussion. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. You for all the work on it.
Trying to send us home before 10:30.
I'm trying, I know. Um, the consent agenda. Um, in the consent agenda, we have the approval of March 6th, 8th, 15th, meeting minutes. We have uh, 11 signed warrants in the amount of $1,832,043.93 signed since March 8th. And we have approval of the middle school, Washington seat. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to pull out the 315 meet meeting minutes. This is just small typo.
Okay, so pulling out 315 and you can email uh, the changes to Jackie and.
So I moved.
Can we not vote on it without?
We just pull. We just pulled that out.
We pulled it.
Yeah, so we're not going to vote on March 15th at all now.
I thought we could like make an amendment and then.
If it's.
We've definitely done that before.
If if you have a thing that we all agree to.
It just says, instead of a total of, it says a total oof.
Oh, okay, that sounds good.
Yeah.
I don't care where that is. Search for oof and replace.
H3 at the end.
And this is.
So I used these.
Maybe it was at 10:30 at night.
Well, there really, she did use a really big word. Well, there was, she did use a really big word. I was like, I think that's a mistake.[1736.34]